Good evening. Today is the 18th of June 2014, and this is the Hingham Zoning Board of Appeals. The time is 7:03. And for purposes of the open meeting law, these proceedings are being recorded. The first item on our agenda is Barbara Bouchard Miller, application for a front and side yard setback variances from Section 4A of the zoning bylaw and such other relief as necessary to construct a 24-foot-by-16-foot single-car garage at 26 Bonnie Breyer Circle in Residence District C. And who is here for the applicant?
Francis Thornton, presenting his presentation. I'm better than her.
Okay, so is the mic on? Are we -- so if you don't mind, since this is being recorded for posterity, use the mic and identify yourself for the record, please.
My name is Francis, F-R-A-N-C-I-S, Thorn, T-H-O-R-N-E.
Okay.
And we're in the process of building a new home at 26 Bonnie Breyer Circle, of which part of it we would like to have a one-car garage.
Right.
The one-car garage, there's no room on either side of the property to build a garage. Our only choice is to be somewhere in the front because our house is set back like 54 feet. So we have a big setback. The roadway setback is 22.2 for a minimum. We're at 23 and a half. So we're not asking for that variance. We're asking for the variance of six feet on the side of the garage from the property line. And the reason we are asking for that there is the only logical place you can put the garage based on how -- the lot is only 50 feet wide. And if it's -- if it were to go on the other side, we would have an oak tree right in the middle of the garage door.
That would not work.
For the driveway to come all the way out.
We figured that part out.
You'd have to go around the tree to get into it.
Right.
So we've offset it off to the side for what we think is reasonable.
Yep.
It misses our front door just barely, and it misses the oak tree. The other side, it just wouldn't work. So, you know, we have pictures, if you want to see it, of the setup.
Yep, please.
Okay. This is -- the house is under construction at the moment. See the house?
Yep.
This is the proposed footprint of your --
Yes, that's the proposed footprint right there. And as you can see in some of the photos, you can see the big tree. This is some of the other typical garages in the area, like Bonnie Breyer Circle, this is all and Bonnie Breyer Circle.
Right.
This one's behind it, it's like four feet, it's got a path on it right there. And then these are just typical garages around the neighborhood. Here's a print of the actual neighborhood with all the buildings that are like on the property line and places that are popping on, they're all across the --
So you're -- this is you?
Yes.
Okay. And so show me now where the garage would be that you --
It's gonna be right there. I have it shot. This is what it would look like. This is the proposed footprint right here. This is the existing footprint for the house. This is what's being constructed. And this was our, as you can see on the property, this was our only other choice, but there's the tree right there. So you'd have to somehow back around this if you were gonna get out.
But that would be close to the other side, right?
Pardon?
That'd be close to the other side yard.
Right. You would need the same variance.
I only have -- you can see in some of the pictures, there's a telephone pole that's just off of our property line. So we would have to go between the telephone pole and the oak tree and do this. This is the -- in 2012, this was approved by the board, same-sized garage, smaller variance.
Yep. I mean, there are some differences between this property and yours, particularly --
Right. But the actual variance is what I was shooting for is that's five foot and four foot.
Right.
Whereas the precincts, the garage is almost the same size. From the property line, it's the same, even though it's back part of the lot.
Yep.
Then I have letters here from some of our neighbors.
Have these previously been submitted to the board?
No.
Okay.
Not the numbers.
So I'm going to actually hand them to Emily to make sure that they are properly included in the record.
Is this the proposed face? I mean, so no windows, just siding on the -- and this is the six feet right here, right?
Yeah, one this side right here.
And this is how you are proposing to build that?
Right.
That side would be full siding?
Right. But, you know, as far as where it can go, it can't go anywhere else. There's nowhere else for it to go.
Can I see the -- So the first letters from someone at 20 Bonnie Breyer. And where is that? Where's the --
20 Bonnie Breyer is our subject of property.
Right.
This is the house next door. This is a vacant lot next to 20.
Okay, so 20 is not immediately a budding neighbor.
Yeah, but the other one here.
Right.
And the other one's across the street.
And then we've got one from 26 Bonnie Breyer, which is --
I'm 26.
Oh, I am in a butter -- or a property, okay. And --
30.
This is -- oh, I live at 30. Okay, and 30 is?
Is that the little lot? That's right here. These two are --
Okay, that's two together.
Uh-huh.
And then we've got one from 33.
Right, they're just across the street.
Right, okay.
And then I have another neighbor here that lives at just on either side of 30.
So in terms of the location of the garage, I'm just looking at your picture you've got here.
Mm-hmm.
And then we could slide it.
Mm-hmm.
And what's your view on the pros or cons of sliding it over?
Well, if I slide it over, then I've got the tree right behind the lot, in front of the garage door, basically. There's the tree right here. See, there's the front door.
Right.
This just comes off of the side of it. But you would have to -- and the driveway's only gonna be like 25 feet, so --
Right.
When you back out, it's not even hardly a full car length, so you have to go all around the tree.
So where's the -- so I'm not proposing this as a suggestion.
Right.
If you actually moved it over and then angled it so that the tree wouldn't be a problem for backing out, and then you'd be further away from the --
Well, if I did that, then I'd be right smack in front of my front door.
Yes, that's true.
So can you just show me where's the tree? Is the tree over here? Where's the tree? From this tree?
Yeah, on this one, the tree is like right here, within here.
Oh, so it's right in the middle of the lot?
Almost. You can see in the picture where it is.
Yeah, it's hard to tell.
It looks as if it's actually on -- is it considered -- is this considered public property or your property?
It takes up about the 10 feet that you get from the road to the property. It's not technically on my property, but it is right there in front.
So it's not even your tree?
Yeah, exactly.
This would be a public shade tree.
Okay.
Covered by the statute that we've learned so much about. So that it could not be removed except with the permission of the tree warden.
Yeah, it's not on our property. It's just growing right there.
Yep.
On that 10-foot area there.
Are there any drainage issues that would arise from rainwater coming off the roof, going into one direction or the other? Either problems for the neighbors or?
I don't see any. Where if you look where we're located at, we're located at the foot of the hill.
Mm-hmm.
So most of the hill is above us. You know, we're sort of like on the cusp of the hill.
Right.
It flattens out, you know, right at our -- where our driveway would be. It's where it starts to flatten out.
This is the tree right in front of us. Extremely big.
There we go. Thank you.
Would that clarify that the tree is --
It does.
Thank you.
It does.
And it's half on the street, so it doesn't belong to us.
Yep, yep.
So this would be, based on how narrow the lot is?
Yep.
You know, we had to build the house back 54 feet, or 50 feet, in fact, is a setback. 54 was built within a half feet. So definitely stuck with the original footprint.
Are there other homes on the block that do not have garages?
Oh, sure. Yeah, there's a lot of houses that don't have garages, but on either side of this, the garages are set out.
Mm-hmm.
They'd be right in the line maybe. This one.
Yep. Okay, let's see if there's anyone else in the audience who'd like to speak? If you don't mind, we'll just keep this up here for a second. Are there any butters or neighbors who would like --
Please.
Please.
My name's Nicole Fasoli. I live directly next door at 24 Bonnie Breyer. We have a six feet of -- the six feet that side. I don't know the technical term. It is -- the six feet is way too close. Where this garage would be would basically be right on top of my house, blocking any light from the entire side of my house, my kitchen, my dining room. I have a big slider. When I look out the slider, it would be right there. It would completely block any amount of light. I go -- I get up in the morning, I open the slider, and my house is filled with light. We would live in darkness with this garage there. The garage is only 14 feet wide. I don't understand on a 50-foot lot why it only needs six feet, why it needs to be so close to us. It would lower our property value, make it appear like an alleyway. I actually have pictures if you'd like to see. And we do have a garage, that's true, but our lot was grand private for us to have a garage where it is.
Right.
And our garage does not block anyone's view or any light into anyone's house. And we also have no idea how high the proposed garage would be. And the house right now is just framed, so I'm assuming a door could be moved if needed to do. I can show you pictures?
Yes, that'd be great. And just to make sure I'm clear, which is your house?
I live at 24.
So this is their lot. This is you right here.
I think it's -- is it this?
Maybe right here.
Well, this is shown.
Oh, hold on, we're coming this way.
But this is -- I thought he said this was vacant.
It was built in 2003 or --
No, I'm sorry, this is because we're coming this way.
Grand private lot.
This is my lot.
So this is not vacant. I thought he --
No, the other side. If you look at this, then I think it's right here. This is the six feet. This is --
Okay, so it's on -- right, so this is you right here.
This is me right here. So I'm on this -- I'm right here.
You're here, right?
I am.
Over here, yes.
Yeah, this is your house.
And this is my house.
And this is where your slider is, over here.
All right, we'll show you.
Yep.
Here's a picture, basically of the lot. This is my kitchen slider.
Mm-hmm.
Kitchen window, dining room window. This is -- this is eight feet away from the property line. It would be two feet closer coming out, completely blocking anything at all. They have 50 feet across. To swish that over on my side, and even the length of it would be blocking anything And the majority of the houses on the street do have garages. There are some that do, but there are quite a few that do not.
Yep.
Would you still have a problem if the garage were moved over more toward the center of the lot? I understand we have a problem with the tree, but --
It depends on where it was.
Well, I mean, they can only go so far in this direction, but assuming that they were able to put it, you know, closer to the middle of the lot, is there a distance where you would be okay with it, or do you object to it completely?
No, I don't object to it completely at all. I mean, that's fine, but it depends on how far away it is. Because as I said, with 50 feet, you're only -- you're talking a 16-foot garage. That's a lot of space.
Right, it goes approximately to the middle of the lot, right? The six plus the 16 would be.
What's the required?
20 feet. So you really could only have a 10-foot wide garage and comply with side yard setbacks on either side of the property. It's a narrow lot.
Yep.
And I think the setback from the street is 50, right?
Yeah, right, yeah.
Well, it is for residency, I should correct that. So you're able, we have an exemption in our bylaw that allows you to build to the average setback of the adjacent property, so they're complying with that.
So that's basically, that's more than half of where it should be.
It's hard to tell from this picture exactly where the tree is because you can't see it here.
Right, it's being -- it's in front of that --
It's somewhere over here, yeah.
There's the truck, so it's over here.
Right.
It's shown on the cycle. So it's called out, you can see the shadow of it. It's hard to tell exactly how far it extends, but it does appear to, you know, when the line falls to the edge of the --
Oh, is this it here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I didn't notice that was a tree.
So when I asked the applicant before about if the garage was moved over, what the issue would be, and one of the comments I heard was, well, that would block the front door. That's the front door on a house that has not been built, and that front door could be moved if they needed the garage.
Right, can the front door be?
We're not -- I don't want to redesign the home, but that's sort of a classic self-created hardship, if you will, where they position the door. Do you --
I think that's my house right there.
This is --
I think that's my house.
Okay.
And that's the slider I'm talking about.
Right.
And see, this is exactly, this is my house.
Yes.
And that's how close it would be.
Yep.
Basically on top of the house.
Your house is approximately 10 feet or so from your property line. Would a similar setback on their property line be --
I have no idea because then it would still, it's still say 10 feet, but then it's all that in front. I mean, I am very concerned about how dark my house is going to be.
Yeah. How old is your house, if I can ask?
When did we build it? 2004? 2004 we built it. It's been 10 years.
Okay, let's see if anyone else has any comments or questions? Well, Dave, what do you?
Is this north?
Yep.
So this is the north side of her house?
It points, yes.
So, I mean, I was just thinking, not to figure out, not to design anything, but the northern exposure on the sunlight is probably not as problematic as if somebody was on the south.
Mm-hmm.
That's one thing. The only thing that occurs to me is if you're kind of constrained on that, is there a way to narrow the width of the garage, which may not be as useful, wouldn't be the same use, but would be a different use, and maybe could be helpful and get you off the line a little bit without bringing the tree into play?
Do we know what the minimum width of a garage should be to serve effectively as a garage?
Usually it's 12.
12.
Okay, and this garage is, what's the width?
16.
16, okay.
So that gets you to 12. I mean, if you went to that, you'd be at 10 feet, yeah.
Yep.
Or and potentially, if I can move it over a little bit more.
Are there -- the trees that are here, are there -- I'm asking the applicant, are there a number of trees around Bonnie Breyer that this is sort of a common constraint, the trees, or is it unique to your property?
There's a lot of trees on Bonnie Breyer Circle. Quite a few, and they all come out of the streets.
Let's -- we can go through the criteria that we would need to establish in order to grant a variance. And the first one is owing to circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of the land or structure, and especially affecting the applicant's land or structure, but not generally affecting the zoning district in which it is located. So what is it about the topography of this plot that is unique and that is causing the problem? To the extent it's the tree, the tree is not unique, we've just heard.
Right.
I don't think there's a soil condition issue. To the extent there's a shape issue, it's because the narrow -- the lot is narrow, but again, looking at the map, that doesn't appear to be something unique to this property. So I think in terms of dealing with the first criteria, we'd have some trouble. The second issue is a literal enforcement of the provisions of our bylaw would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise to the petitioner. I think to the extent that the garage -- we're talking about a new structure, so it's not as if we'd be asking them to move something that was already built.
Right.
Whether or not something can be designed that was more narrow and more centrally located so that it better respected the side yard setbacks, I don't want to be the designer for the project, but I think that's something the applicant should consider. Then the third aspect we need to look at for a variance is desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good and without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purposes of our bylaw. In terms of substantial detriment to the public good, we've heard from at least one neighbor who's concerned about the detriment to her property. I'm finding it difficult to justify a variance here. And I'll, in my view, the applicant, you've got two things to consider. One is you can ask us to put this to a vote, and we can make a decision. If we grant the variance, you've got the grant, you've got the variance. If we deny it, then you are prohibited from seeking, from filing again for another variance for, I think, two years. So a negative vote could have a long-term impact. The other option is you could listen to the comments that you've heard from board members and think about withdrawing the application and coming up with a different design that perhaps better respects the setbacks and is not so much of a problem for your neighbors. So what would you like to do?
Still the option to consider alternatives and ask, request a continuance, or, I mean, we had a couple of suggestions on the table about narrowing the width, and perhaps that, as opposed to re-advertising, if they withdraw, reconsider them back.
Is that something you'd like to do?
Does that even --
The third option, Emily is right, is ask us to hold off making any decision and to figure out if there's a different design that you would like us to consider.
We don't have another design that's possible. I would say that we think we've made a case for the only logical location for it, putting it only at the side. We couldn't even drive in the distance between the telephone pole and the tree. We don't even have the telephone pole. We're over some that. We've got about 12 feet of -- Nobody in the whole area has a garage that's mapped in front of their house, which is what we're asking them to do.
I do.
Her garage is attached. Her garage faces, her house faces the other direction.
And it's attached to the house.
We're on the back of her house, not the front of her house.
Right, okay.
Right. And we've taken down so many trees, I heard to say she doesn't have light. There were so many trees on that property. And the garage is not going as close to her door as she's led to believe.
Yes, it is.
Way in front of her door.
No, this is not a give and take here.
Yes, it is.
No, no, I actually was talking to Nicole.
I mean, we are, we're set almost identical beside her.
Right.
As far as lining it up.
Right, but in, one of the reasons for the setback requirements is in fact to allow neighbors to have the space and the light, and --
Well, the other thing is, they're only 10 feet off of our property line, and that, you know, if they were over her, that they'd have no light.
But --
So their property, they didn't need to comply with the setbacks because when the lot was created, there were those setbacks.
Right, right. So they are in compliance with the zoning applicable to their lot, so it's not appropriate to --
No, I'm just saying, this is, you know, part of the circumstances they were dealing with.
Right. Oh, I understand. But you're asking this board to essentially waive a --
If we were two feet over, would that generate a lot of light? I don't know.
I don't know, and that's not a discussion that I'd like to have. That's a discussion perhaps you might want to have with your neighbors. So there are three options on the table.
You can ask for a continuance.
And so you can either ask for a continuance --
No, I want to go with option one. No, just go with the continuance. Point three, want a continuance?
It means that we would not make a decision on the hearing. We could, would continue it to another date, and that will give you time either to submit new plans, see if there's another option that works for you and your neighbor, or you could withdraw it later. Or you can come back and say, this is the best we can do, just vote on it. So it just postpones the time that we would make that decision. What are we talking about for a date?
So you are both in on July 7?
Yes, that's a Monday, right?
At 7.
Yeah, that'd be best for me.
Maybe we do 6:45, if that works for you, Robin. We also have July 23 meeting day.
I probably can't do that.
Okay. July 20 later, but that would be tricky for a quick -- or then we're looking at August.
It's probably gonna be the end for me or August.
July 8.
I can do July 7.
July 7.
Sorry, Monday 7.
Oh. Yeah, actually, that should be okay by 6:45.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
So are you available July 7?
Yes.
Okay, so would you, are you asking us to continue this to July 7?
Yes.
Would that give you enough time to perhaps figure out if there's another option? Okay, so at the applicant's request, I'll accept the motion to continue with, continue this hearing to 6:45 on July 7.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We're continued. And if you don't mind, I'd like to keep this, because this is very helpful for our analysis. This is all part of it. This is all part of it.
Remember this in the back.
I know.
I'm feeling thankful that we get along with our neighbors.
Ms. Gardner? Just, would you say, oh. Right, okay. Next, it's, uh, seven thirty-three, next item on our agenda, Gardner Investments, Inc., care of Wesley Drew, petitioner for a modification of a use variance issued December twenty-eighth, two thousand nine, allowing a dog daycare and boarding facility. The requested modification would permit training of dogs within the fenced front yard at one ninety-one Beale Street in the industrial district.
Good evening, and I'm Wesley Drew. Um, in addition to the application, I have some questions here for you guys, that may help clarify.
Yep.
So the first one there, for the diagram of the space.
Yep.
Highlighted in blue, uh, existing. It's all existing, but what's, what's yellow is the proposed new space. Uh, someone leave you up. So basically what we have is a thirty-four by eighty, uh, closure on twenty-one, where we're looking to do training and, uh, hopefully, uh, basically, it's something that happened ongoing. We put the fence up because we were worried about safety concerns, dogs running into the street, things like that.
Right.
And it triggered some, uh, I actually didn't realize that I'd wind up here for it. Um, I didn't realize that it required a variance modification. So actually, after working with them, I kind of figured out exactly what it was that I was going for. Is there anything I can clarify for you guys, or?
So this vantage point is this, as if I'm just kind of standing right here, looking at it right?
That would be... Yes.
What would be the sound impact on neighbors?
So, um, this space, what we'd be looking at doing is one-on-one or one-on-two, sort of specific hands-on training with dogs. Not, it's not a matter of letting a bunch of dogs out there, running around, going to the bathroom, things like that. Um, that's not what the space is supposed to be used for. We already have that space existing, uh, which is the spacing blue. So really, um, there would be no additional sound implications for the neighbors. We're currently operating, we've been open since last October.
Yep.
And we have no noise complaints or anything like that. In fact, actually, the, uh, facilities manager for Hang of Woods has complimented us, and he's told us that he's surprised he hasn't heard a single barking dog.
Right.
And I would have him here tonight if I could have gotten him to come.
So if we coupled the modification of the use restriction, uh, to allow the fenced yard, consistent with your representation, that it would only be used for those purposes, is that something that you would find acceptable?
Absolutely.
I don't know how the building commissioner will police that, but...
Well, there was a couple of, an issue down there, so we took care of that, did a job, and now, um, since I've been in there, I'm, I'm, I'm always...
Okay. And so you're saying that the fenced area would only be used for this one-on-one training, or?
It'd be training, and actually, there's something that's, that's been born of us putting up the fence, which is interesting, which is something we never even imagined, but we have some of our neighbors from Hang of Woods and the surrounding community that actually walk their dogs, and they're interested in coming in and being able to play with the dog off-leash. You know, again, that's sort of one-on-one, it's not, you know, a lot of dogs running around with, um, limited supervision or anything like that. So I would absolutely agree to restrictions, or however you'd like to word it. I don't know if I'd want to say simply just training, but maybe, um, if we could do something where it would be, um, limited to, um, like you were saying, sort of, uh, high ratio or low ratio of people to dogs, something like that, if that would make sense, or like if we were a person with two of their dogs out there playing frisbee or something. The dogs aren't sounded sound that we're talking about. I don't know what the best way would be to word that.
It would seem to me there would be a difference, though, if it's an employee of your operation with a dog versus a neighbor who's in this area.
Sure.
Who might not, isn't, I don't know if they're bound by this, but, you know, I'm just...
It's, well, you know, and that's not even really something that I've had much time to think about, just because there are other liability impacts that have to go through.
Yep.
I'm a little bit...
The only reason I brought that up was just because I had one lie by myself, you know, two weeks from now saying, gee, what was I, something?
Understood, yeah.
So we're talking about here, right?
We're talking, could you?
Sure.
Is it this area here?
No, 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 it's, it's the inside of this fenced area.
So they're talking about using this inside, there's currently the fencing.
Oh, it's already fenced, okay, all right.
And why was that fence built?
So we put the fence up, um, because we're already using the space, and it's just a matter of making a safer environment for dogs. So that's why we put it up.
This area in blue is open air?
No, that's, no, no, that's, um, that's opposed, the, the smaller rectangle there is...
It's open, okay.
That's currently...
Is this a dog run or something?
Yes, that's, that's where they, you know, do the let-out and everything, and they go to the bathroom and, but, um, it's, um, there's lots of drainage and, you know, kinds of turf and everything.
And Emily, what is it about the existing use variance that would preclude them from currently using it this way?
Um, it says there will only be one exterior change in the configuration of the property, an eighty-by-twenty-foot fenced play yard would be installed on the Churchill Road portion of the building.
Which is not this area.
Which is, this is outside of that area, and that area had to be treated with special surfacing, um, and dogs had to be supervised, I think, were the two limitations that the board imposed. So it's, it was shown on the earlier provision, as I referenced in the dis却.
So if we allowed the use and said that the dogs needed to be supervised, supervised when in this, in this fenced area, um, and then there are the noise provisions of the zoning bylaw, as well as the new noise provision that was just adopted at town meeting that would be applicable to this operation. I don't have any other... Is there anyone here, neighbors or butters with questions? Yes?
My concern is a noise concern.
Yeah, if you can just come up and use the mic, please, and identify yourself.
I'm Ellen Murphy, I live in Beale's Cove.
Yep.
Across from it. So far, everything's been fine, but I'm concerned that my balcony looks out to Beale Street, and I want to make sure I can sit out there and enjoy myself without a lot of barking.
Exactly, got it. Okay, anyone else? Please.
My name is Carol Early, I also live at Beale's Cove. My deck faces Beale Street, and the fence looks fine, we haven't had any problems. The motorcycles are another situation. But, um, I'm not objecting to dog, the dogs being boarded there.
Right.
But I'm afraid of the noise impact also.
Yep.
That's my concern, because you sit out on your deck, and I don't hear the dogs now. I do hear the motorcycles, but the dogs seem to be fine, and the fence looks fine.
Yep.
The area looks okay, but the noise impact is what I'm concerned about.
Yep.
If they're going to be training them right there on Beale Street, it is very close to where we live.
Yep, and it's a residential area, absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, thank you. So noise is what this is about. I think we need to limit the use precisely, so that there's not ambiguity. And are you, is there a proposal that you'd like to make that you think would satisfy the neighbors on the noise issue in terms of either how many dogs, hours, or do you want to submit something to us after you've given it some thought that, that will work for your business as well as limit the noise?
Sure. Well, as far as, as far as the noise is concerned, um, I take the, you know, my relationship with our neighbors very seriously, because I wind up having complaints from them, that it only makes my life more difficult than it will make their lives difficult at all. So as far as operation of the space, it'll only be during business hours.
What time?
Monday through Friday, six to eight, and then, um, Saturday and Sunday, nine to five. However, it's not, the space wouldn't be used throughout the day, it certainly wouldn't be used at six o'clock in the morning, things like that. Um, this is, again, it's...
So what hours would you propose for the space? And if, if you'd rather not propose it off the cuff, you can come back and give it to us, but I think, yeah, if your business hours are six to eight...
Sure.
Having them out at six is not going to work, having them out at seven's not going to work. Uh, I don't even think they'd like it at eight, so, um, I would encourage you to come with a proposal that really limits the noise exposure of the neighbors. You may even want to draft something up, and you now have two concerned neighbors here, even circulated to them, so that when we look at it and we ask them if they like it, they will say yes, and that will make things go smoother for you. So...
All right, so what is the best way to go about this?
So it sounds like you, rather than do it off the cuff, again, I think you should submit something to us. I mean, the bylaw changed to allow this sort of use here, but, um, we really need to focus on the abutting, or the neighborhood across the street. So why don't, I, I think this is another continuation, but...
Could we maybe address them?
It's, we have, we're backed up on hearings, so...
I would just say that, I don't know if, if it were something that the neighbors were happy with, if I, if I, as long as I'm adhering to the sound guidelines that are in place now in town, I don't know if that's something that they have, because they're, they're a little stringent.
Uh, um, particularly with respect to hours, I'm not sure that that's going to be adequate.
Okay.
And this is not going to be a place where, where dogs are going to congregate and cause, cause problem, I just want to make sure that that's not happening. So I would encourage you to submit in writing, um, and then hopefully consult with the neighbors, and then this should be a three-minute hearing that we could just be able to review and approve. And I'd even do it the same day if we can.
That's fine.
Yes.
Sure.
Forty on...
July seventh.
July seventh. Are you around? If, if that doesn't work, we can, we've got other dates.
Nope, I'll be here.
That's the soonest that, that works.
I'll be here, I'm just anxious to use the space, that's all.
Well, this is, this is pretty soon.
Yeah, all right.
Okay, so, uh, I'll accept the motion that we continue the hearing at the applicant's request to the seventh of July at six forty.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And so please, get us something in advance of the hearing, so we're not looking at it for the first time at the hearing.
Thank you very much.
And I appreciate you coming out to voice your opinion. Who is this?
Emily. I'm all set now? Okay, I just wanted to be sure.
Do you know what this is?
I think that came with the, um, with photographs.
Oh, oh. Thank you.
See you guys, see you July seventh.
Isn't it nice being so definitive to all these things?
Have a nice July fourth.
Yes, have a good July fourth. Take care. How you doing?
How are you?
I am well, how are you?
Well, the wife calls me yesterday.
And what did she call you?
Me and her sister, and I are going out shopping. I said, oh, what is this? You can't encourage that. No, I...
I'm going to have a six o'clock vote tomorrow, I'm going to be going to teach for five straight days.
Jeez, five straight days?
Well, Monday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday.
Chop, chop.
Chop, chop, okay. I'm with you.
I didn't get back from Connecticut until two AM, Wednesday, so you may have to nudge me every Wednesday, just to be sure I'm awake here.
Five, six o'clock vote? Why the marathon teaching?
Uh, because I'm an idiot and signed up for it.
Okay, we're going to get through this. Okay, so...
I saw this stuff on the boat that you sent. What do you teach? United State Finance.
Oh, good.
Tomorrow and Friday, and then real estate development, and other business agreements.
So these, these aren't courses that you can, like, slough off?
No, people are coming in from all over the country, it's like summer semester, right? Well, no, it's actually, it's part of the revenue model for the center, so, you know, they basically pay hundreds of bucks a day.
Yeah.
Hello, Susan.
I have everything that goes in your notes of rule submissions, and I have all of the ones that were... I have, I have, I think.
You've got everything, too.
I think I have everything, Joe says I have everything.
Where is the, uh...
Leader here.
Just the stuff these days. This isn't it?
So she has no other home.
She says that's good, sold it.
Yes. I'm sorry?
Yeah?
Uh, no. Where is the, uh... Emily, the, their comments to the waiver requests. In the packet, which... I know, and I'm, now I can't, I can't find what I did with it.
Uh, no, this is your stuff right here.
Attachment A on the first page.
Is that my stuff?
This?
No, no, I just gave that to you.
Oh, you just gave it to Emily, right, okay.
The front page says attachment A on it.
Yeah, I, I'm just trying to figure out what I just did with it.
That, that right there?
Yeah.
No, no, actually, hold on.
Oh wait, it's the Susan Murphy, uh, no, it's the Jeff Angler one. Right, I had that, and now I don't know what I did with it.
Here it is, if you don't mind, because it's, you had a cover, you had a cover on it.
Uh, okay, okay, thank you. Right, good. Okay, are we ready? Television man ready? Okay, the time is seven fifty-two on the eighteenth of June. Next item on the agenda is a continuation of the forty B hearing for S E B, and, um, I have another couple of items to go over. The first item I'd like to go over, Emily, is to review for the record the list of submissions that have been received since our last hearing.
So... Okay. We received the draft conditions, um, as reviewed with comments by the applicant. A message from Jeff Dirk dated June 12th responding to a question related to shade trees. Um, Board of Selectmen meeting minutes from shade tree hearing held April 17th, 2014. Plan prepared by Bay Colony Group entitled 500-foot radius plan from Yale River. Um, undated forwarded message from Bill Buckley, including analysis and cost estimate to install separate reserve area next to the primary sewage disposal system, along with a message from Jeff Engler dated June 10th, 2014, agreeing to perform the work of the board grants other unrelated waivers. Um, we also received a memorandum from Peter Freeman regarding SEB Hingham LLC 40B application Board of Health regulations dated June 13th. Correspondence from Walter Sullivan and Anita Commerford date, uh, regarding Hingham Shade Tree Tree Warden issue dated June 17th. Correspondence from the Board of Health regarding the Village of Main 40B project dated June 18th, 2014, with addendum. And I'm just checking one other list to make sure that, that covers it. Does that seem to be the system with you?
You know, Emily, we also got something from the DEP.
That was received at the last hearing.
At the last hearing.
Yep. Um, the permit for the wastewater treatment-
Right, okay.
System, yep.
Okay.
I think that's it.
Okay.
Yep.
We've got a number of issues that remain to be covered. But I wanted to give the applicant the courtesy of, if there's anything you want to either introduce or talk about at the beginning, or we can just continue and, uh-
For the record, Jeff Engler from the applicant, um, I think we are permitted to continue.
Yep.
I think Emily accurately reflected what we submitted, uh, for the record since the last hearing. I don't think any of it really necessitates more description.
Yep.
Pretty straightforward, so we would be happy to pick up where we left off.
Sure. So my recollection of where we left off was shade trees. Uh, we're learning a lot about shade trees and the law and, um, what, uh, what this project involves. I just had a couple of questions, and then I'm going to go into our discussion, just so I'm clear. What is the number of shade trees that you're seeking have taken down? And when I, I'm referring to shade trees as the trees that are, um, on the public way.
There with me?
Yep. Sorry, I should have prepped you ahead of time on that one.
Todd, I just gave Todd a copy of the map.
Eleven.
Right, so there are 11 shade trees you're seeking to take down. And how many then would remain along the, uh, public way on your property?
Give me, in the, not on our property.
Correct, right, right. Oh, right, in front of your property, on the pop, right.
Uh, I don't have that number, but I would, knowing the site, I would guess, you know, I, 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 it would be speculation.
One, two, three, four, five, six. It looks on the south side, there'd be one, and there would be five on the north side of the driveway.
So there'd be one left on the north side of driveway?
Three, four, five. There'd be five left on the north side, and it looks like, based on this plan, there would be one tree on the south side.
Got it. Okay. And, as you know, the Shade Tree Act, one of the things that ultimately is going to be looked at, whether by us or by someone else, is, um, safety of people traveling. And, uh, and you know, for the record, there was something introduced, um, from Jeff Dirk. I, I just wanted to be clear, it's my understanding that in current, given current conditions, if your project wasn't around, the shade trees are not creating a, a problem for travel on, on Main Street. Is that?
No, they are. I mean, I have a different perspective.
Okay.
The shade trees have never been looked at, obviously. But the owner that lives in the location-
Right.
Has, uh, an issue after leaving the driveway based on established actual standards. So, her, her situation suits unsafe, uh, the same standards that would be applied to our condition.
But with respect to the people who are riding up and down Main Street, there's a separate question about the people coming-
No, it factors both ways. It factors people riding on Main Street being able to see her exit and her entering. So, it impacts, yes, people on, traveling on Main Street.
Okay. So let's go to the questions, uh, that were before us. The, the question that I think that your counsel posed, um, is whether or not the tree warden is a loc, would be considered a local board or a local official within the meaning of Chapter 40B, and whether the zoning board could act as the tree warden. Is that fair? Very brief summary of, not raising the arguments, but just the point that you're, that was being made.
Well, the board raised it as a question.
Right.
Our response, both the applicant and he as counsel, have said very strongly, we believe that tree warden is clearly a local official-
Okay.
Under the, uh-
Okay.
40B law. And right in the statute, I reminded you, in section two, it says that the local tree warden is the power to, along with its regulations, which if he does, are going to be local bylaws.
Right.
The fact that he hasn't done that doesn't prove his fact that he is a local bylaw.
Yeah, I mean, I, you've submitted, um, excellent memos on point. Um, and as I've read them, um, in that you've, you've pointed out that the, uh, the SJC has a functional analysis, and you referred to the, you know, the Dennis Housing Corp., um, versus Zoning Boards of Appeals decision, um, for, for your point of view. And, uh, you've also pointed to the Housing Appeals Committee decision in Peppercorn Village Realty Trust versus Hopkinton, um, to support your position. And then, on the other side, we've gotten excellent memos from Walter Sullivan and Anita Commerford. Did I pronounce your last name correctly? And you've relied on such SJC opinions as the Donahue versus the City of Newport case and, and other cases. I've looked at all those cases, and I've read the memos extensively. And I actually think the question that's being asked is not the right question. The question that's being asked is actually easy to answer. And the way I would answer it is say, what would be the implications if the tree warden was deemed a local board that the zoning board, that our board, could act for? What would be the implications under 40B? It would be then a violation of 40B for the zoning board to require the applicant to go before the tree warden. And similarly, it would be a violation if the HAC asked an applicant to go before the tree warden, to review and approve the work, because if it was, if the tree warden was a local board, like, the planning board, we can't direct an applicant to go to the planning board to do site plan review. We have to do it here. So, the implication and the direct result of the tree warden being a local board that the zoning board could act for is, we couldn't direct the applicant to, in fact, go to the tree warden. The decision, the HAC decision that counsel provided us, the Peppercorn Village Realty Trust case, the zoning board and the HEC directed the applicant to go to the tree warden for a review of their plans. No question about it. So either the HAC was acting in violation of 40B, or even the HAC recognized that the tree warden itself is not a local board that the zoning board or the HAC could act for. Otherwise, it would not have been permissible for the zoning board. I'll, I'm going to continue, and then we'll, I'll let you respond. And I've given, uh, my fellow board members here as copies of the, of the Peppercorn Village decision. It's, and it's on page 23, where the, there's the condition, uh, requiring that the applicant, uh, go to the, uh, the tree warden for a review. And then if it turned out that they needed to work on a different plan, it would, it would be an iterative process. But directing the applicant to the tree warden would be prohibited, just as it would be prohibited for this board to direct the applicant to go to the planning board for any sort of site plan. That's a function that we would have to perform. So I think the, the Peppercorn Village Realty Trust case is on point that, in fact, the tree warden is not the local board and is not an entity that the zoning board can act for. And there's a fair number of cases that really put the tree warden in his or her own class. But I don't think that's the question that the applicant even needs to ask us. Uh, I think what you should be asking is, can the zoning board act as the Board of Selectmen under the Shade Tree Act? Because the shade, the Board of Selectmen have their own functions under the Shade Tree Act. Basically, if someone appeals, or to make certain determinations about whether or not trees, uh, the shade trees are causing problems on, on the roads. And so, I've given my fellow board members a copy of the Shade Tree Act. And if you look, for example, it's section five of the Shade, it's chapter 87, section five, that in fact, the, the tree warden needs to remove certain trees if ordered by the selectmen, uh, on a determination that they obstruct, endanger, hinder, or incomode persons traveling on the public way. And so, I think what you're really asking us is, can we act as the Board of Selectmen and then instruct the, uh, the tree warden to do certain things? That's the role. It's not, we would be the tree warden, we would be the Board of Selectmen. And that, I think, is the real question that, that we need to look at. And I think the answer to the question as to whether or not we can act as the Board of Selectmen hinges on whether the Board of Selectmen, when they're acting under the Shade Tree Act, are acting under state standards or local standards when they hold the hearing. Uh, the Shade Tree Act is one of several state statutes, uh, that were passed to protect vegetation in the Commonwealth. In fact, there's a MCLI, Massachusetts Continuing Legal Education publication that sort of lists those statutes that were passed to protect vegetation. You've got the Wetlands Protection Act, you've got the Shade Tree Act, you've got a number of other acts. And, as I see it, the Shade Tree Act is similar to the Wetlands Protection Act, which is chapter 31, section 40, and it's also similar to Title V. In both of those situations, you've got a local board. In the concert, in the case of the Wetlands Protection Act, you've got the Local Conservation Commission. Or Title V, you've got the Local Board of Health. And they're boards that are all locally appointed, locally paid. And when they act under the local bylaw, this board and any zoning board can act for those boards when they're acting under the local bylaws. But when those boards are administering the state act, when the Conservation Commission is acting under the Wetlands Protection Act, this board cannot act for the Conservation Commission. And when the Board of Health is looking specifically at Title V, this board cannot act as the Board of Health. And there's a reason for that. The reason, even though they're local boards, when they're acting under the state statutes, we can't act for them, because under 40B, we need to be balancing the local interests versus the state mandated need for affordable housing. But when they're app, when those boards are acting under the state statutes, there's no trade-off of affordable housing versus protecting the wetlands under the state act. When the Conservation Commission holds its hearings, it determines whether or not the state wetlands laws have been respected, regardless of whether or not there's a need for affordable housing. So there's no balancing act, which is typical, what the zoning boards do when they're considering the local concerns versus the state concern for affordable housing. And so I think what we need to look at is whether or not the Board of Selectmen under the Shade Tree Act are acting as a local board or as a state board. And as counsel's pointed out, under the Shade Tree Act, there's authority for local bylaws on shade trees. And in fact, I checked, there's a number of towns that do have local bylaws. Uh, the town of Lexington, town of Orleans, town of Grafton, they all have local bylaws dealing specifically with the Shade Tree Act. Hingham is not one of those towns. We don't have any local bylaws under the Shade Tree Act. So the selectmen, when they're acting, they're acting only under the state act. Just as the Conservation Commission, when they're looking at wetlands under the state act, they're only acting on the state act for purposes of 40B. So, in that situation, the need for affordable housing under 40B does not trump the other state provisions. Uh, it would trump the local concerns, but it doesn't trump the state concerns. So, in my view, this board cannot act for the Board of Selectmen to the extent that the Board of Selectmen are acting under the state mandate for, for shade trees. Uh, and in fact, there's, there's some really old cases where, um, local officials tried to take down trees and didn't follow the, the Shade Tree Act. And this, and the SJC, I think it was back in the 1930s, the SJC said, "No, no, no. Even though you're local, there's a state provision here that governs-"
State interest, yeah.
That, that governs the shade trees. And it, it, the case involved that the town wanted to increase parking on the side of the road. And so, the, the court said, "Well, that's not taking them down for protection of people traveling on the road. That's, that's another interest. We're not going to allow that." So, in my view, this board cannot act as the Board of Selectmen under the Shade Tree Act. What, what, what is your view? And then, I'm going to take it a step further. But I think I'd like to open it up to the board at this point, in terms of whether or not you followed, agree or disagree, or got questions for-
Well, I, I mean, I followed your argument, yes. Yeah, I followed your argument. I mean, as I was, um, I read the, um, letter from Mr. Sullivan and Ms. Commerford. And, um, there does seem to be a distinct state interest here. And, um, there is a delegation of authority by the state to the municipality to administer state law. That's how I interpreted that.
Yeah.
But it is state law. It's not, it's not local law. And so, your analysis, um, with the, you know, obviously you've done additional research and kid, but that, that sounds, that sounds right to me. And I agree as well. I think your analogy of the Conservation Commission acting under the State Wetlands Protection Act, or the, or the State Wetlands Regulations is, is spot on with the, the Board of Selectmen. And the fact that we have no local bylaws.
Right, so-
So acting strictly under the state act.
Right, so if we had no law, if we had no local wetlands bylaw, the Conservation Commission would only be acting under the state act. And this board could not act for the Conservation Commission-
Correct, which is the case in many towns and cities.
In those. So, which, so I don't think we, we really can, can, can go the step that the applicant would want us to do, which is to look at the issue as the Board of Selectmen would under the Shade Tree Act. And I also want to note that I think that, um, what I've heard the applicant say, not at this hearing, I haven't really given him a chance to speak yet, but at other hearings is that there's the question about whether or not it's endangering, um, people passing on, on the roads.
Right.
And to, to put that in perspective, let me, let me give you, let me just pose a hypothetical to my board members. Suppose that the shade trees were, and there's no question under the project proposed, there was no issue about safety on driving, but the shade tree roots were going to make it impossible for them to put the septic system where they wanted it to be. Because the shade tree roots were going to sort of disrupt the septic system. So let's, let's just get the safety issue out, out of the way for a second. Under those circumstances, I don't think there's any doubt- Under those circumstances, I don't think there's any doubt that the Shade Tree Law would say, you can't take down the shade trees. Even though there's a, a need for affordable housing, the Shade Tree Law has a limit about those conditions that will allow
A tree to be removed.
A tree to be removed. And if disturbing the septic system is not one of them, it can't be done.
Right.
And if it can't be done, and therefore there's no affordable housing, that's an unintended consequence of enforcing the law. But I think that's what the law would require.
I, I, I would agree with that.
Yeah.
I would have to agree.
Based on what I've read. And, and I guess the other thing I want to note for the record is that the courts really do, the, if you don't mind, we're just gonna, the courts do distinguish between travel on the roads and people accessing the roads. And we've had our traffic engineers submit something that there is no danger to people currently traveling on the roads as a result of the shade tree. But that, that's an issue that I think ultimately the board of selectmen would have to deal with when they, when they look at the issue if the applicant would submit it to them. So where, where the applicant has requested a condition that we in fact act as the Shade Tree Warden, or direct the Shade Tree Warden to take certain steps, I am going to suggest that our condition be that we direct them to comply with the Shade Tree Act and to deal with it directly with the board of selectmen.
Because, because we don't have authority to act in the manner they're asking.
Yes, yeah. Okay. So with that before, Susan, does there anything you want to add? The council wanted to respond, but I wanted to give you the.
Nope.
Okay. Yes, sir.
For the record, Peter Freeman, Freeman Law Group, representing the applicant. And I respectfully disagree with your conclusion, and I respectfully disagree with many of your specific points. I'll start with Pepper Corn. I think you are completely misreading that case. As I pointed out in my memo, the H A C, and they're not disempowered from dealing with other local boards if they feel that they could be a local concern. But what they did is, they certainly asserted jurisdiction over the tree warden because they modified the zoning board's condition, which simply said, go to the tree warden. They modified it to say that the tree warden shall look at the proposed cutting and shall either approve or disapprove, and if disapproved, shall suggest an alternative plan that will allow the project to go forward. They clearly, the H A C asserted jurisdiction under forty-B over the tree warden. That's number one. Number two, the things that I cited in my memorandum from the Dennis Housing Corporation versus, oh, it was related to Oakings Highway versus the Dennis Zoning Board. All of these things remain the same except for a local residency requirement for the tree warden. The S J C said, the mere fact that the historic district was created by an act of the legislature, as was the tree, public tree, Shade Tree Act, does not operate to negate the overwhelmingly local nature. Town historic committees and the members are appointed by the town's selectmen, same as with the tree warden. Elected by the town's registered voters, that's another alternative, the tree warden can be elected. They removable for cause by the town's selectmen, same for the tree warden. All members in the Oakings Highway except for the architect, that's the residency requirement, which is not the same. The expenses of the historic committee are paid entirely from local tax expenses, uh, local tax revenues, exactly the same as with the tree warden. So all of those factors are exactly on point. And then the final point there is what I said earlier. Clearly, I don't agree with you that it doesn't matter whether the town has promulgated local regulations. Clearly, the legislature viewed the tree warden's activities and what he or she does as local, or else they wouldn't have said that. Equally important, in the Oakings Highway case itself, because you're looking very, very technically at the difference between state and local, as I said, I know this personally because I was chairman of the Oakings Highway Regional Historic District Commission for twelve years. That historic commission and the local committees are state agencies. Look it up in the C M R, nine oh one C M R, I forget the number. Their regulations and all of the local committees, all of the committees that are constituent members, the Barnstable Bolt Committee, the Dennis Committee, which is the one in the case, obviously, they are part of the state agency, state agency, and they have to follow the state regulations that are promulgated in C M R, Code of Massachusetts Regulations. And yet the S J C said, it doesn't matter. That alone is not what we look at. What they do of its nature is local. And I submit that the local trees are equally as local as dealing with architectural style and proposed new construction or renovations or demolition. And also, part of the Oakings Highway case, the, let's see what the final point is. There was something else in my memo that I was going to refer you to. So give me a moment just to pause for that. Before I get back to that, if I do, I also want to point out one of the questions that you asked at the end of the last hearing, which I thought was a good question, appeals process. You analogize and make distinctions between the tree statute and the Conservation Commission's duties under the State Wetlands Protection Act. In that case, there is, there is an appeals process that is set up through D E P, a state agency. That's very different than with the tree warden situation. Likewise, you talk about Title V, and it's the same situation. There are Title V rules and regulations, and there's an appeals process beyond the local board. So those distinctions support our position that the local tree warden is much, much, much more like a local official under all of the case law and even the definitions in the C M R four forty-B, seven sixty, C M R fifty-six point oh-two, which lists the definitions and have not been overturned by the courts. In fact, again, the Dennis Housing Corporation case dealt with those regulations, and they're still the law. The S J C has not overturned them. So I, I just think you're really on the wrong track to give the power. And I did think of the last thing I wanted to say about the Dennis Oakings Highway case. I certainly, as I said at the last hearing, the last thing I would do is trivialize the importance of both the aesthetic and historic architecture, which the S J C in a way did. They said, and, and I certainly don't mean to diminish the value of trees in some circumstances. But two points. In the S J C case, they said near the conclusion, we basically can't see that allowing a historic district committee to essentially have a veto over an affordable housing project when affordable housing is in such dire need, we can't see that trumping forty-B. And I respectfully submit, and with no disrespect to trees, I cannot imagine either the H A C or the S J C saying, well, trees can somehow trump the need for affordable housing. And the final point, which isn't per se on the technical analysis of state versus local, but I think it's relevant to your assessment. Trees can be replanted. Okay? Trees can be replanted. Theoretically, if there's a place, maybe you'd have to analyze where, and you still can't say that they should be planted in a way that might lead to another site distance issue. I certainly acknowledge that. But trees can be replanted. So I would urge you to consider that and urge you to reconsider what the chairman just went through, because I think that the law is very, very strong in favor of our view. Thank you.
That was, I appreciate that. I agree, trees can be replanted, wetlands can be replicated. That doesn't mean that the, that the state law is, is going to be ignored. The Pepper Corn Village Realty Trust, that H A C decision, as I read it, it's, it actually wasn't the H A C that revised the zoning board's decision. The zoning board itself revised it, and the H A C acknowledged and accepted that revision. It, it really doesn't matter. What's important to note is that the Village, Pepper Corn Village Realty Trust is not a Shade Tree Act case. It concerns scenic roads, and it concerned a situation where Hopkin can, had actually adopted a local bylaw to implement that. And so this was a really, this, to the extent H A C was acting for anyone, they were acting for the local planning board, which had the authority under Hopkinton's local bylaw to be addressing the issue. So I, I really don't see that the Pepper Corn Village Realty Trust's H A C decision is at all contrary to the position that I'm taking. One of the big differences with respect to the town star commissions and the, the Dennis Housing Corporation case is that is an entire body of law which local towns have to opt into, which is very different from the state mandated Shade Tree Act, where the towns have no choice. They're covered. Unlike the, the historic district areas, the state, the towns are required to comply with the Shade Tree Act. And if they don't hire and appoint a tree warden, it's illegal to cut down a shade tree. So the, whether or not the towns want to go with it, they're stuck with the state mandate, which is very different from the situation with Dennis Housing Court. I, I think that you've pointed out the issue about who appoints, who pays, who can hire or fire the tree warden. That's all true. But it's also true for the Conservation Commission, appointed by the selectmen, paid by the town. And when they are in fact administering the local bylaw, they are an entity for which this zoning board can act. But when they're acting under the state mandate, we simply can't. And I think the situation is, is parallel here. I, I respect the fact that you respectfully disagree. And I, I really think that the, to the extent that there are competing state interests, this board is not in a position to weigh the value of shade trees versus the value of, of affordable housing. And respectfully, I don't think that's something the H A C is authorized to do. They are only authorized to look at local interests versus the state interests. Yes, sir?
I would just like to say one quick thing. I believe what you said about Oakings Highway, local towns having the right to opt in, that is actually not correct. It was imposed by the legislature. There was no choice of a town to say yea or nay. It was imposed by the legislature in nineteen seventy-three. As I recall the act, and I'll say I'm ninety-nine percent sure, yes, there's a provision where there can be a vote of the electorate in the town to vote to remove the town from the Oakings Highway Regional Historic District Act. But the legislature must still approve that removal from the district. So it is still very much a state law. Being in it or not in it is still within the power of the state legislature. Thanks.
Okay. What exactly does that state law impose upon the municipality? I mean, with the Shade Tree Act, my understanding is it's prescriptive. You can only take down trees if they meet the following conditions or criteria. Is there something different about that, that the nature of the historical district that, the, the fact that there's a, a, a state legislative act that creates these districts, what does it, what criteria, what's the effect on the, on the towns? I mean, is there, are there similar prohibitions and constraints? I mean, does it say there's, that towns cannot do certain things? Or is, is that even, is it, is it, I'm not sure my question's even relevant.
Susan, can you help us on that?
To be honest with you, I have not had any direct experience with the Oakings Highway Historic District. I mean, Peter used to be chair of it, so, you know, he may be able to.
So, so would the state law prevent a town from approving something if it was in the historic district? Because the state law, under the Shade Tree Act, prevents a town from removing trees.
I understand the question and what it prevents. And, and I think it's right on point and analogous, but I think even stronger in favor of the Oakings Highway having more detailed regulations and criteria. Yes, there are state enacted standards which involve a certificate of appropriateness that an applicant must apply to that, that historic district to obtain. And it's all of the state regulations as to the standards and criteria, both in the statute, which spells out certain things, the size, texture, historic nature of the building and surrounding area, the setting, all kinds of things that are right in the statute, as well as the regulations that have been promulgated as Code of Massachusetts Regulations. So yes, if a committee doesn't follow those procedures, that's what the whole appeal, appeals process would go to, as with any process. There's something unique, which I don't think is relevant. You don't have to go right to court. You can appeal your, your committee's decision to the Regional Historic Commission, which acts as quasi-judiciary. But I don't think that's really on point. But then ultimately, the appeal is to court. And if the state standards in those state regulations have not been followed in the opinion of either the commission or the court reviewing, then the action that was taken is illegal.
So what was the issue, what was the issue in the Dennis case? What, what was the, what was the, the forty-B development issue in the Dennis case?
Well, they didn't apply. They said that they don't.
But we have two different cases. Are there two, right?
I'm sorry?
Are we talking about two different cases?
No, I thought, I thought that Mr. McGrath was still talking about Oakings Highway.
Oh, okay.
Oakings Highway is what I mean. I'm sorry.
Yeah, all right.
In the, in the Dennis case, in, in a nutshell, the applicant didn't apply to and claim that there wasn't jurisdiction of that historic district commission. And the local zoning board disagreed, and that was the issue. It didn't get into specifics of the design or what criteria of that commission and committee were not followed. It just was really the jurisdictional question. And the S J C said, yeah, they don't need to go. It just doesn't apply.
All right. And you're, so they don't need, that, that commission doesn't apply, are you saying that the Shade Tree Act doesn't apply?
No. I mean, what the, what it, what it, what it comes down to is that by saying there's not jurisdiction of the Oakings Highway commissions and committees, I would say that means that there's not jurisdiction of the tree warden acting on his or her own. What it means though is that the zoning board of appeals would have to make the decision, do we deny this or offer a condition because we think that the aesthetic and historic values are not being met? And have a design condition or denial based on those types of criteria that are normally handled through the Oakings Highway, but in this case would be handled through the Board of Appeals.
But, but couldn't, couldn't a developer always, couldn't a developer, and maybe they can't comply with the, the, those state conditions?
Well, no. I mean, on a forty-B, it's also a density issue, you know, a large-scale, multifamily building, which is what was being proposed. And it actually was a combination residential and single, residential and business area on six A in the middle of Dennis, which some of you may be, you know, may be familiar with. So it was a combination of size and massing, scale, as well as the actual design. So, you know, in that case, in order to have the density required for rental, it was a rental, you know, it was basically, I think, maybe an oversimplification, but, you know, it was all or nothing. But again, they would have had the power, they clearly had the power, the Dennis Oakings Highway to, I'm sorry, the, the zoning board of appeals, you know, to approve it, standing in the shoes of the Oakings Highway Historic District Commission. And that's all I'm saying. I'm saying you stand in the shoes of the tree warden. I'm not saying throw out what you think the guidelines are, but you stand in the shoes of the tree warden. Simple as that.
Okay. And we have to follow, and, and just to complete your argument, we would stand in the shoes and we would have to follow state law?
Well.
Because there's no local bylaw. We would have to follow state law.
Well, it's again, it's, no, because I say that it, that it's implemented at the local level, just like.
Well, it's administered. It's administered at the local level, but it's still state law. There's nothing that.
But so is the Oakings Highway. Couldn't be more state law when it's the Code of Massachusetts Regulations. So you exercise your discretion under the, call them, call it the state statute.
Right.
But you exercise, you exercise your discretion, and if you believe that the safety of the travelers on the road is impacted, and that on the balancing test with forty-B, that's the big difference. You still have to apply the balancing test. I'm not saying you don't look at what the guidelines are in terms of the, the safety aspect on the roadway, but then you still have to apply the balancing test under forty-B, the housing need versus the local concern.
Here's a difference. I mean, I have the, I have the case right here. The historic commission, this is the Oakings Highway.
Yeah.
This is right out of the S J C case. Promulgates rules and regulations for the administration of the historic district. The commission has the power. of the historic district. The commission has the power to designate portions of the historic district as exempt areas within which a certificate of appropriateness is eliminated if they determine it lacks historical significance. The historic commission may also designate whole categories of exterior architectural features as similarly exempt. So I, I mean, it's not the same as having a statute that says you can do this in these circumstances or not.
Right. That's what I'm trying, that's what I'm trying to understand.
There's, it's not the same beast.
And I, I guess the other point, and you are correct, that the, in terms of being able to withdraw, it's, the towns can vote to get out of it, and then the legislature has to do it. And in fact, it seems to have, when people, when towns ask to be withdrawn, they withdrew. So Born, Harwich, and Eastham withdrew. They voted to withdraw, and the legislature said, fine. So it, it is sort of a town-selected statute that you elect to abide by, as opposed to the Wetlands Protection Act or the Shade Tree Act where that's the law. And there's no opting out of it. So I, I think there are distinctions. And I think we would be remiss to act as the Concom on the Wetlands Protection Act issues, or as the Board of Health on Title V issues, or as the Board of Selectmen on Shade Tree Act issues, even though each one of those boards are local boards, to the extent that they're local citizens, paid by the town.
Implementing state law.
I don't even know if they are paid.
Administering state law.
But.
You hit it one.
Yeah. So, so the fact that although they have all those criteria, you need to look at what's being administered.
Right.
And I, I really, you can give that back to Emily. I, I just don't see that we're in a position to, to say that not only are we going to act as the Board of, Board of Selectmen, but that we are going to be in a position of weighing whether or not the state interest in shade trees should be subordinate to the state interest in, in affordable housing. That, we just can't do that. Yes, sir?
Can I follow up on Todd's point? Very practical thing. I think the Board of Selectmen asked you to act, they told us who's there. They did not deal with the safety issue, which is in the regulations. They only dealt with the health of the trees. They said the Board of Appeals, you were supposed to deal with the safety issue. And in fact, they directed us back here. So in one sense, they're giving you permission to act for them on the safety issue. They only look at this quality of the trees, which is totally irrelevant to the issue of safety, which is your purview. So they asked you to act that way. So that's, to me, a very different situation than, than you can act for them.
I, I, I think that's, I'm not sure I would agree with your characterization of, of what happened at the Board of Selectmen. I would note that there are two different sections of the statute that we should be looking at. We're talking about chapter 87. The, there was a hearing, I understand, under the Shade Tree Act, which would have been triggered, the public hearing, which was under section four of the, of the statute.
Section five is what you did.
Right. But section five is actually different. And it's not clear to me whether or not the Board of Selectmen believed that they were holding a section four hearing or a section five hearing.
It was section four.
So if it was section, and, and so the issues that I'm raising are, I, I think it's, it's appropriate to be looking at it as, as a section five hearing. Again, I wasn't there. I haven't read transcripts. So I also don't believe that the Board of Selectmen have the ability to delegate their authority to us. Either we've got the authority under 40B or not. The, and I believe actually there's a case that says it's not something that you can delegate. The issue about whether or not there's a, the shade trees can be sacrificed, and I'm using sacrifice, I'm not trying to be overdramatic, but taken down for the benefit of a 40B project. If we were looking at the safety issue, the endangering people traveling on the road issue, the, the example that I gave was suppose that wasn't an issue, and the shade trees were only impacting your ability to side septic system. In that circumstance, I don't believe there would be any justification under, under the Shade Tree Act to say the shade trees should come down, even though it was impacting affordable housing. So that, that to me demonstrates that there is no balancing between affordable housing and shade trees, that the only justification would in fact be if you can come under the criteria of section five. And I think it's the Board of Selectmen that need to make that decision. And I think the statutes or the cases are clear that traveling down the road is what's the issue, not people pulling out of the driveway.
That's what makes it unsafe, pulling out of the driveway.
Well, I, I, I understand that's, that's your view. I, I respectfully disagree. Yes, sir?
The only thing I would offer is the entire subdivision control law is a state law and a state enacted scheme. And there are many aspects beyond the locally enacted planning board subdivision rules and regulations that still are state law. And yet, years and years ago, the 1970s, it was clearly held by the SJC, and zoning boards recognize that, that you stand in the shoes of the planning board. So, you know, just the fact that there is this state public trade she, public shade tree act.
Yes.
You know, that's the starting point. You know, to me, it's really analogous to all the things I said, including the subdivision control law.
Why don't we stand in, in the shoes of the Board of Health for Title V?
The only conundrum I will acknowledge on that is that one could say, well, based on the Oakings Highway case, which was also state regulations and a state board, the argument could be made that, that you should. The distinction that I still state is that there is not just the DEP set of regulations, but there's the appeals process.
What is the appeals?
But, 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 but the, but the fact is, I mean, again, it's black and white. So lawyer and non-lawyer, it's pretty obvious. The SJC has bent over backwards, in my opinion, to support 40B, not to the extent of enabling a zoning board to do what they want with Title V or with the state Wetlands Protection Act. But, you know, again, when you have a tree act, a public shade tree act, which, other than those few things, doesn't have regulations, doesn't have a whole administrative scheme affiliated with it, to me, that's why it leans so strongly, in my opinion, still, as to being local. It, it's, it's, and you, you can say that, you know, the things that the SJC pointed out don't matter, but it was the SJC who pointed them out. So, you know, yes, other officials are appointed and paid for by the town. But when you go through each of those things, and, and even the fact that the, the tree warden has the power to plant trees, I mean, how much more local can you get? The state doesn't care. There are no standards where you, where you plant trees.
Right. But I don't believe there's a prohibition against anyone else planting trees.
Well, I mean, the public can't plant trees in, you know, in the, in the, in the.
But the town can.
Public, but the town can, sure.
Right. But the town can't take down the shade trees unless the tree warden does.
Right, right. But the town, but the town is local. I mean, the town, that's the whole point. The town is local. The town can, can plant trees within their rights of way, and they can take down trees, both through the sections you cited, the appeals, the tree warden, and then initially, and then subsequently, if disapproved, the, the selectman. And that's all very much at the local level, not involving the state DEP and their regulations.
Wait, but just, but state, the, the restrictions under state law still have to be abided by, right? Under that act? So it's not a question, it's, it's the question of who, but there's also the question of what? What, what can you do? What are you permitted to do under the act?
Well, there's a two-part answer. Number one, I still say, no, the answer is not they have to. There's still the balancing test that's inserted. So you have a lot more discretion in dealing with it, just as you do with all other local bylaws. So, you know, that.
Okay.
That's my answer.
Okay. I, I do want to give some other, one second.
If I may.
There are some other people that want to be recognized. I'm going to do that. I'll certainly let you speak. We've got other items that we, I want to cover, so, because I know.
Well, that was the point. I, I don't think my counsel is going to change your mind. So there's no point in this interaction. Let's, you know practically speaking, your decision, we don't have a project. So let's move forward and do what we need to do. And, and, you know, because this interaction is, is not going to be productive.
Right. So just, just so I'm clear, in my view, we, I would be directing the applicant to go Conservation Commission, Board of Health, and the Selectmen with respect to, to various state acts. And if in your view, that means you don't have a, a project, I'm not going to comment on that. Walter, you were being very patient. So if you had anything else you wanted to.
No, I, I know that the board's time is precious. I think we're all set.
Okay. Thank you. So, next item I've got on my agenda is the Board of Health calculation on the costs, not, not, not the Board of Health's calculation. I think the applicant submitted their calculations on the trenches, building, putting in the trenches that we talked about in the Board of Health discussion. We got an email on that.
Forty-five thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yeah.
And was, I, I wasn't clear. Was there the view that that made the project uneconomic?
Well, no, I think that, well, we could ask the applicant, but I think the reply was they could live with that additional cost if the other waivers they were looking for, trees in the right of way, nitrogen loading, et cetera, were, were given by the board.
That's correct.
Is that fair?
Yeah.
Okay. So I guess I'm not trying to horse trade on conditions versus items. If, if this, if this particular item is something that would make this uneconomic, I, I was hoping to know. If, if you're saying, yes, but we need to give you to include other conditions, it's, in my view, that's not an answer. I, I need to know if this is something that is a cost issue for you.
Let me answer this one, Mr. Chairman. The Housing and Bill's Committee has ruled that you can look at things cumulatively.
Right.
Not every face has to be uneconomic. But if you're cumulatively uneconomic, uneconomic. Shade tree rule stands the way you have made it. All these issues are uneconomic for us. It's a cumulative thing. We're not conceding to anything because we have to make an appeal. We're going back to the beginning. And so there is no further, this is economic, this is uneconomic. We can't help you with that, unfortunately, because we have a larger issue at stake, which is all these things are going to be added together when we form our appeal. So that's really the reason that Jeff said, what are we talking about? Because we've taken that away from us. And we don't have that.
I mean, all the, all the things that we negotiated with the Board of Health could pay relative to additional studies and monitoring wells and whatnot, that's all going to be open for re-review. So it's unfortunate, but it's the nature of the process.
Yep. Okay. And then the Board of Health submitted its own letter.
I have not read that.
Which just came in. And I have not read that either. Have you received it at least?
We'd like to appreciate that you have something handed to us at the May 28th hearing.
I agree with that.
We read it briefly. Particularly when the town asked us to provide things, we couldn't attend to it.
We did, right.
Emily would acknowledge that we could try with that for a year.
Absolutely.
And then all the letters we sent to you have come in today of the hearing.
Right. Um. Yes. So is I was going to have someone from the Board of Health review this with us? Or is there something that you would recommend instead?
I just had a chance to read through it quickly, actually, on my train, on the train, on the mail, because I think it got circulated maybe around four o'clock. And, and, you know, I, there's a representative of the Board of Health here.
Right.
I, what I, I don't know, but maybe Dr. Schultz could, you know, point the thing because they've kind of restated all the waivers.
Right.
There is some kind of added support or response to items that they disagreed with from the May 28th hearing. I don't know that their request to the board on any of the waivers has changed. I think that's the specific question, that, you know, other than providing additional support to the board, or additional supplemental information in support of their requests to the board, I don't know if there's a different recommendation on any of the items. I didn't have a chance to go back and compare, kind of their requests to the requests they had made previously.
In my reading, and again, it's not as in-depth as I would have liked, was we had heard testimony from one member of the Board of Health, and this was an attempt to make sure that the comments we received were in fact reflective of the, of the entire board. So if you wouldn't mind identifying yourself for the record and then explaining this.
Yes. Kirk Schultz, a member of the Hingham Board of Health. And the information that you have in front of you with the letter is a further information based on the questions that were brought up at the last meeting. There's nothing new. So I can go through each of the issues, not necessarily the letter, the issues that were brought up the last meeting, in which our letter documents and substantiates our point. But I certainly can speak to all those issues here verbally.
No, I think you've, you've covered them very well already. Is there anything that's new in the letter that you had not previously covered?
Yes. The open questions from the last meeting was, number one, about the groundwater test well program.
Yes.
And the board was going to inquire from, I think, John and Emily, what the industry standards were. And what we've done within our letter, we've outlined that the Board of Health already has contained within our local regulations those particular industry standards. And I'm going to come back to that in just a second. The second is that there was a question about the financial assurance mechanism allotment, that the applicants felt though, that the FAM, the Financial Assurance, was a valuable tool, but there was a question on what would be a reasonable cost associated with that particular tool. And so what we've done within our letter, we've researched and found a similar comparable within the town, and have identified a calculation or figure for you.
And where is that?
That is within the report.
So that is item number?
Why don't I move ahead and come back? Okay. The most significant aspect of the last meeting was that there was a disagreement between the applicant and the board, or myself through the board, whether the Regulation 7 that deals with the treatment plant.
Right.
Whether that was applicable to the applicant. They said no. I said yes. There was a disagreement. I just sat back because I knew that I had to get a copy of the regulations to be able to read to you exactly what the regulations state. And give you a practical example as, as far as how they're routinely interpreted. And so the regulation about a treatment plant, that definition, and the A through G, I'm sure that's about eight or nine different elements, that is the new material in which I presented to you within the letter. It's on the third page of the addendum. And the reason we did that is to help the applicant because it was our understanding, where they didn't ask for that particular waiver, that they didn't think that was an issue, that they would have a plant permit, apply for that, that we would go through the regulations. And a number of them don't apply to the particular plant. And the Board of Health routinely waives those particular requirements that don't apply. Now, what's interesting, and I knew this as we went through the process, and I specifically did it, is instead of going through and just saying, well, this is a Board of Health regulation that talks about test well monitoring of groundwater, within that regulation, surface, surface water monitoring, and the financial assurance mechanism, all within that same regulation, number seven, I wanted to argue the point. And that's why our letters, we cover that in detail, to substantiate why. Because what I've been hearing from the applicant is that, you know, you have no evidence for what you've done, the Board of Health, for these particular rules that you have locally. And state statute and state. And state statute and state regulation, that is all that we're going to abide to. And so I thought it was important, the Board thought it was important, to give you contextual information on why those regulations are there. And so, from what I heard over the few meetings, it seems as though the Board understands the concept and the importance of having monitoring because of the conditions and how they are unique, and also for that financial assurance mechanism because of the particular building. And what I would add to that is, you know, local regulations, granted, they are local, but they go through an extensive process of community development, they go through a posting in the paper, they go through promulgation, and then application over time. So these are willy-nilly things. They have science, they have substantiation of, of studies and information behind them. And you don't get a chance to see that when I just read them off. So what I've done, what the Board has done in this most recent letter, is to go through and just substantiate a number of things in, in general, of why we're asking that you waive a lot of Section VII, the regulation concerning plants, but at the same time, to identify why they absolutely should be held to that standard and the importance of it. And that's the way we, you know, we track and maintain that information within the Board of Health, through a permit. So we are asking, and again, we are asking that the Board maintain the Section VII standards within the comprehensive permit, but waive certain elements of it that are not practical. And I, I, I hope that they will agree to that. At the same time, those local plant standards do contain a couple of the issues that we dealt with in detail. And so we can, we don't need to go back and review that. And that is on the, the last page of the addendum. The first two pages, they're identical. You've already addressed most of those, some of them are irrelevant, because you've already, not voted, but you've determined one way or the other, and some are the same arguments that you've upheld. The letter also has some additional information, and we might spend a little bit of time on that tonight if you'd like, on the nitrogen loading study, a nitrogen loading issue. Because the Board pushed that off and said, well, this is something, we don't, we'd like to get more information from that. I know that Attorney Murphy was going to potentially look up some case law examples that she could find. And so the Board of Health has provided you, in this particular letter, with additional information on things we've already talked about. One is that with our communication with the DEP, we found out that the performance standards for the denitrification systems, based on criteria that may be dated in some way, because of the low-flow fixtures that we have within homes. And within the letter, I've also included an example from Pennsylvania, in which a, a study has noted that the performance standards for the FAST system, which is what this applicant is proposing to use on this property, how the performance of that has shown a 21% deficiency relative to what the posted performance standard is. Again, just additional information to put into the mix for the Board, could have everything at your disposal to, to adjudicate this. In addition, we talked about the town of Topsfield, up on the North Shore, they're in a stressed watershed similar to us. And I talked about the process they went through with their 51-page report on how they came up with their local regulations concerning how they're going to deal with de-watering within their watershed, okay? I went through the report and talked about the fact that, you know, if we impose their regulations in our town, it would seem as though this project would be unbuildable. And then I went and researched other towns. We looked at the town of Toro, in which they have a regulation in which the project would be cut down to about 14 bedrooms. And then we also have the town of Carver, in which they have regulations that mirror their Zone Two to their, their zoning within the town. And we briefly talked about that relative to South Hingham compared to the rest of the town. Again, gave you more information within the letter in, in greater detail. So as far as having an additional request, the only thing that I am doing is, is I help them. They were going to be held to all the performance standards of Section VII of the local regulation, because they never asked for that waiver. And so what we did, the Board of Health, and they came in to talk to us in more detail, they would have got to that point. But what we did on our own is we identified those sections that we're asking the zoning board to waive, and those that we're asking you to hold fast. And I would, I would add that the components of significance are the ones you've already addressed with. And that is the test well monitoring program and the financial assurance mechanism component. And just on that last bit, and I'll sit down and listen for questions. We did comparables within the town, and Ridgewood Crossing was the one that came to mind. It's not in the Zone Two, but it's of similar size, it involves a plant, again, it has the same gallons per day, or similar gallons per day. It's a single system for multifamily, it was put in about, I think about 12 years ago, you have that in your record. And the financial assurance mechanism, they'd agreed upon that, based on the cost of the system replacement, was $80,000. We put that number into the report, not because it's our number, it's what we received back from them, in their opinion. And so with this applicant, I would hope that they would go through with the same process to determine what it would cost to repair or replace the system in case of failure, just like Ridgewood Crossing went. And I'd be surprised if there are significant differences. I don't think Ridgewood Crossing came out and said, oh, you know, we're going to have an inflated amount. I imagine they probably held it to the lowest possible. So I hope that you have the chance to read the report for additional information. It does give a lot greater detail to our local Regulation 6.8, which is the 12,500 square foot per bedroom limit, which granted, is different than Title V. But in our reports, we've outlined nine different studies, evidence, in which this local, by, uh, local regulation is based upon and substantiates its application within every property here in Hingham. I don't feel as though this applicant should have some type of waiver from that, from health and safety, simply because of the balance of the 40B. That's something that will be looked at, but not on its preliminary investigation. Because we have substantiated in, in an extensive way, again, those nine components, and we just haven't seen much from the other side, except, you know, a lot of misstatements and frankly, some mistakes. One of the things we brought out in the report, and we heard this last two weeks ago, was that big old circle surrounding Falling Mill Pond. And that, oh, that was the, the south school, and, but it was labeled a middle school, oh, it's just a mislabeling issue. No, it wasn't. Those calculations were specifically for the middle school that's located a mile and a quarter away. So we provided you with the information relative to the south school, so you have everything at your disposal that's accurate and truthful. So again, I'll answer any questions you have, but I appreciate the time.
Joe?
Tom? I don't have anything at this time.
Yeah.
I can't process all this.
Right.
There's a lot, there's too much.
Am I correct, I'll just make it clear for the record, that the provisions that you, that the Board of Health does not want waived, you think those provisions are necessary to protect the health and safety of the residents of Hingham?
I do, and again, Mr. Chairman, we anticipated right from the beginning that they were not going to contest Regulation VII. And I only heard that two weeks ago. That's why we had to scramble and put this more detailed report together for you, in addition to the information you asked us for, in that regard.
Let him finish and then we'll, are you finished?
The answer is yes.
Okay, thank, yes.
I just have one question. Could you ask your, your review to tell Mr. Jesse if in his mind, the SEPT system would propose another wastewater treatment plant and not a system?
You can ask him directly, he's here.
Is it a wastewater treatment plant under what definition?
DEP.
Under DEP, it's not?
Okay, thank you.
Under, under the?
DEP would, that wastewater treatment?
If you don't mind just coming up to the mic so that?
DEP has a couple of different types of wastewater treatment plant, like a municipal plant, similar to our MWRA, and then they have the smaller ones that go to groundwater, but they have, that's their definition. This is a, what they're proposing is, what's they call them, innovative alternative treatment system.
All right, so under Title V, this is not their, their proposed system, this FAST system is not a plant?
Not a waste treatment plant?
Not a wastewater treatment plant.
Okay.
Good. I'm ready to leave Board of Health issues unless you wanted to add anything at this point. When I looked at the record, one thing I didn't see, and maybe it's there, if you could help me, are you proposing any buffering between your project and the neighbors? It wasn't clear to me what buffering was part of your proposal.
Buffering beyond what is, what's there. Fencing, do you mean, or?
Trees, landscaping? Because I didn't see, I'm not sure I saw that, that, that you show buffering with?
Well, there's, there's a lot of trees that will remain touched towards the Mr. Sullivan's side of the property.
Right.
He's not proposing any buffering on the other side of the property.
Okay.
But there are very few houses on that side of the property, too.
So, just so, so with respect to where Walter Sullivan's property is, you're not proposing additional buffering, but there's currently trees that are there, and on the other side, you're, you're not proposing any, any buffering?
I could point that out.
Yep. The, one of the comments, I think, that we need to, that this Board is going to have to deal with, is the question of affordability.
Yep.
And I know we've got our standard provisions for affordability, I know that the applicant had comments on that. Susan, is there anything that you think we need to address on affordability?
Is that the local, was that the local preference issue?
Well, yeah, so there's two. So in the, in the draft conditions, the two that Emily had included, the Boards pared them down significantly from earlier years in light of this and SJC decisions. So bringing some forward from prior deals, I mean, permits, Emily had included just kind of the statement of the number of units in this project that shall remain affordable, and that's the four, no fewer than four, at or below 80% of area median income. The second one has to do with affordable in perpetuity with a deed rider, so making sure that the perpetuity language was in there.
Right.
And the third one is, was just a generic, shall be, the way it was worded by staff was, the affordable unit shall be marketed with a local preference to the extent permitted by law. The applicant is proposing that they be designated, I mean, it's kind of semantics, but then go into a discussion of kind of what the process and procedure is under the current state regs for making the case, the Board's done this in other sites. You have to write the letter stating what the need is, et cetera. So those are the three that are proposed with respect to affordability.
Yep.
So, you know, when, you know, the Board is at a point of kind of going through this in more detail, you can look at the exact language.
Yeah, to come up with the conditions.
Those were the only three that were being contemplated at this point.
Did you want to add anything with respect to affordability? Okay.
Just to go back for a second, so for the buffering, I don't know, it was there a separate, like, landscape plan or?
No landscape plan.
There's, no, okay.
There's, there's not.
All right, so does the Board have whatever information it needs on the record to determine whether or not Emily had proposed one? Just kind of, I think, did you take that, just looking at the multifamily regulations of the?
We borrowed some of the language from the multifamily and lessened the, the width of the landscaped area based on this district's setback requirements, and then borrowed the street tree spacing from subdivision regs as a standard because there was nothing else proposed, so.
Yeah, I saw that, that's why I asked, because I didn't, I didn't want to make assumptions here, but yeah, I, there is nothing else that's proposed.
I just want to make sure that if you're going to contemplate that for conditions, that you have enough information, you have whatever. I mean, I guess the most recent plan, the March 20, is it the March 23rd plan, is, has the 16 units, but shows on it, and that gives you proximity of units to property lines, that type of thing. I don't know if there's anything else you think you need to look at that issue. So that, that was my only question.
I, I think looking at the plans will give us what we need to, to figure that out. So I think we've covered what we need to cover, and so we've got a couple of options proceeding. One is we can just close, and then we can have our debate and discussions and then figure out conditions, which we're not going to do this evening. The only reason not to close is if the applicant wants to add any, anything additional to the record or be able, I mean, once we close, there's no further comments from the public or from the applicant. So it's, I'll just ask you if you have any preference, one way or the other.
We have an open for public comment tonight.
Oh, yes, you're right. So are there members of the public here who have comments or questions about this project? Yes, sir? If you can come up to the mic.
We'll need your name and address for the record.
It's Chris Dunham, and as the resident expert.
But, and your address?
Well, as, as a residential expert of traveling on that road, probably 50 or 60 times a week up and down that road, I have never had a problem with those trees as far as a safety issue goes. So I don't know what the applicant is talking about when they say that there's a safety issue there with the trees. I have been up and down that road many, many, many times, and, and I never had a problem with the trees, so I would just like to point that out.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else with comments or questions? Yes, sir?
My name is Jason Ryan, Brewster Road. I just want to say, as this comes to a close, I was just looking at my notes, I think the first meeting I came to was in January 7th of 2013, and I wanted to just say thank you to the Board for your due diligence, persistence, and attention to this matter, and the concerns of the butters to the project. Really appreciate it. And I know that probably some of you aren't even on the zoning board anymore, and are still coming to these meetings, so thank you very much on behalf of the butters.
I appreciate your comments. Anyone else? Emily, is there anything else that you, that we are waiting to receive, that we have not received?
No, we did receive, just this evening, three draft conditions from your consulting engineer, related to issues that have been discussed, so the applicant just received them as well.
Okay. John, is there anything you wanted to, I'm not aware of it, but if there's something that you wanted to make sure is included, that we've not?
Basically, those were some outstanding ones, Emily asked me to look at this draft, and
Right.
Basically, I tried to compromise between some of the positions, or something I think might be acceptable to all parties. So, if you, I can go through them if you want, or whatever you want me to do.
No, I mean, I've, I've seen what you submit, I'm comfortable with it, unless either Board member wants to?
Yeah, the only, just, and these are the three conditions, John?
Yeah.
Okay, so in the last sentence of the second condition, which is monitoring wells, it says, "Monitoring wells shall be installed prior to construction, and should be sampled a minimum of two times, with one time being in the summer month after a period of minimal rain, if feasible."
Yeah, tough one.
Yeah, so two times, you say they should be sampled two times prior to construction, but not only two times.
No.
So, so they should be installed prior to construction, and then is there a, is there a, I guess down below you say, "sampled quarterly," recommended condition?
Yeah, I mean, I tried to keep it consistent with what they would have to do for the system that's there.
Okay.
The Title V system, I believe, is a quarterly.
All right, so they should be installed, installed prior, prior to construction, and you want them sampled a minimum of two times prior to construction?
Yeah, I can elaborate on that a little bit. Yeah, I can elaborate on that a little bit to help explain it if you'd like.
I mean, I think we can, I mean, where that's going to be part of your condition deliberation. I don't think you need this specific language right now. I mean, because the substance of what he's talking about was covered, I think, in a lot of detail at the last hearing.
Okay, okay, very good. Yes, thank you. I think that's it. Okay, so I would, one more, is there anything else you want to add for the record? Okay, then I would accept a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
So, a second.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We are closed, and then we will schedule some further hearings for discussion and coming up with conditions.
No. On that, was anything else, I mean, the thirtieth had already kind of been flagged. Does that still work, are going to do June thirty?
That works for me.
Was that the only, going to be the only thing on?
Nope, we added something else.
What?
We added something else to the agenda.
There's nothing else on?
Something that's short or long?
Short.
So, maybe you could go first?
And it's going first.
Okay.
Okay, we've got other items on our agenda that we're going to move on to.
Thank you all.
And you're taking over?
Yeah.
If you're awake.
Why don't you take over?
Oh, where's on my agenda?
You're on a roll, you go. Right there.
There you are, thank you, okay.
Am I in the right seat? Doesn't matter.
Where's Emily? Because we're, we've got.
Jennifer Johnson.
HCM.
Yes, we got, trying to get.
Do you need that?
Oh, yeah.
Are we going to receive, are we going to record the rest of this, or are we finished? No, we are? Yes.
I'm, I'm not here for all of it, I'm just, so I'm going to come back when you do Black Rock.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, Emily, we on? Are we on? Okay. Nine sixteen on the eighteenth of June. Next item on the agenda is the application of Jennifer A. Johnson, DVM. Where's the folder for this? Thank you. DBA South Hingham Veterinary Services for a special permit A two under section three A four point four with waiver of special condition one of section three B of the zoning bylaw. Such other relief is necessary to allow for the continued operation of a veterinary cleric on a portion of the building at sixty Sharp Street in the Industrial Park and South Hingham Development Overlay District. Got it. Yes, please.
May I move this over in this area?
You can move it wherever you'd like.
Great. I can use the table talk? Good evening, my name's Jeff Tocchio, I represent South Hingham Veterinary Services. You may remember, Dr. Jennifer Johnson is here with me now, and her husband, David Fedokio. What we're here for this evening is three A four point four uses, which you'll recall was the animal or veterinary hospital. We were here with you folks before, there were questions with respect to hospital versus clinic. This is actually a clinic, which is in operation now, distinct from the hospital in many ways. We went through some of those in the filing. When we were here before, we talked through a lot of the different issues. What we were up against, from one perspective, was a dimensional issue that wasn't arising under section four, the dimensional tables and requirements, but instead it was under, I think it was three B one, which was something which was passed at town meeting in nineteen sixty-four, and had to do with the placement of buildings not used for residential, which were used to house the animals. And what that was, was if you go through the town meeting, what was happening was that, that had to do with pens and horse stables and things of that nature. We were coming forward, and we have something which is very common now, not necessarily in Hingham now, but something which is very common in their profession, which has to do with these clinics that come in. They don't have patients stay overnight, so it's, you know, it's basically a day clinic, and it's all self-contained. You wouldn't know the difference between, you know, this and, you know, dental, you know, dental office, things of that nature, except for one thing, and that is, there's a ten by twenty pen which is out in the back, so that when they, they say perform a procedure on an animal, and it's coming out of the anesthesia, what they'll want to do is they'll want to, you know, have someone go out there and kind of walk off the anesthesia. So, that is in, it's in place. What occurred at the time was that it was being questioned by another tenant in this building. I think there were five units in this building. It's a thirty-four thousand square foot building, which was the former Eldred Wheeler Furniture Factory. Now, its office space came out really nicely. And there were questions as to mitigation, and I can say that mitigation has been provided. There's soundproofing in the walls. They've reached agreement with that, with that other butter, and notice went out to, you know, to basically everyone there. So, we know from these folks talking to their other neighbors there that things are going along well. You'll recall that the planning board did issue their site plan review approval, and that also was issued with a parking determination A three, and, you know, those were basically recorded. What we did when we came in was, we were looking at the distinction between, is there an animal clinic? You'll remember the discussion we had at that time. And what we ultimately did was, we read four ten, the professional office agency, and in discussions, we concluded that, similar to, for example, a dentist, that this would be allowed as of right use. We went in, we actually did apply after we withdrew without prejudice, and we had the building permit issued, and now Dr. Johnson is in there, she's operating with certificate of occupancy. All of the site concerns that we did discuss, not necessarily just with the zoning board, but with the joint boards having to do with P posts and, you know, water faucets being available to make sure that things are clean. Everything's been installed, everything functions. You'll remember, this is being recorded, so I get to be on record saying P posts. You know, there was certain vegetation.
That will come back to haunt you one day.
It will, it will. Hello YouTube. With plantings, et cetera. So, so, everything's in place. Businesses, you know, it's, it's a new business, and they're steadily increasing their, you know, their patient population. Things are going well. In following up with both Emily and with Mike, the questions were, what was the discussion with the ZBA? Did they agree on the four ten? It was our impression, when we walked out of there, that, you know, yes, we're good. Ultimately, what was said was, if Mike issues and agrees, you're good. If, you know, if not, we'll see you when you come back. So, that's the way that it went down. I will note that Mike wasn't here, Emily wasn't here. I don't know if you were employed yet. And then we actually went through, I spoke to Mary Savage Dunham. We've gone through, you know, the notes for that evening. Says that it was discussed, and then ultimately, after discussion, we withdrew. From our perspective, we withdrew because, you know, this is, this is all looking good under four ten. And I know that there's been some questions as to whether that sufficiently circles everything under, under the bylaw. With that, you'll remember that we did discuss, there was an interest in following up with the planning board in the first instance, to see if we could put it in for zoning change. There was a little bit of confusion as to who was going to actually put that forward, so it didn't make this year. However, I spoke to Mary, I think, two weeks ago. I know that there's a memorandum which is being circulated that she went through, and she highlighted, asking the planning board, and perhaps you folks, if this was something that was of interest of discussion, and the points that she made, she asked me to comment, and I said it's excellent, because they were, you know, basically a lot of the inconsistencies and ambiguities that, that we had actually pointed out. She asked if I would, after this, participate, speak with, you know, you folks, et cetera. And, you know, of course, I will do that. It's one of those situations where Hingham in nineteen sixty-four was certainly a lot different than it is now. The industrial zones were new, and Hingham was trying to go through a process of, you know, getting these animal uses out of the downtown, out of the residential areas, if they possibly could. Farms were in transition. Nicholson's farm was, was gone for the high school at that point, and a lot of that transition is reflected in, in transcripts of the town meeting. We then followed it forward, and I believe it was two thousand and ten. Suddenly, what happened was, the uses were, you know, incorporated into the industrial zones. And I do remember that, and I'm sure that you do, too. That was just, there was basically no discussion, it was more of a wholesale adoption of certain categories into the, into the section three use categories. The requirement that special condition one contains, you know, two provisions. One's that forty-foot setback, and also a two-acre minimum lot size. So, there's really no reason to have that in an industrial zone. Industrial zone has a thirty-foot setback, you know, so it's basically inconsistent with much of the industrial zoning. And then also, the placement of buildings not for residential use. I, you know, I just think that it, it made sense then, and it really doesn't now. So, with that, what we're requesting in this instance, because it's not dimensional, but it's one of those, the use provisions, is if the board would waive it, recognizing that, you know, it's not really applicable in this instance. Also, the building's existing, it's been existing, I believe, from the nineteen sixties or nineteen seventies. It's legally conforming, it's in place. And then also, the use or the unit itself actually is over a hundred feet away from Sharp Street, and it's about forty feet. We didn't exactly measure that, but I, I would venture to say, if it's not forty, it's thirty-nine, maybe it's forty-one. But also, the, the bylaw doesn't really recognize, in this instance, that there would be separately demised places within a building. So, if we go through our application, I think we've probably picked out eight of the easiest inconsistencies or reasons that, that that isn't, it isn't necessarily efficient and accurate to apply that condition to this situation. And with that, we've gone through all the other criteria for the uses. Again, the planning board's already issued the site plan review, and we can, we can point to it. If, you know, if anyone's brought a pet there, it operates well, and all the other neighbors. We, you know, we haven't had any complaints expressed.
Were the other tenants in the building noticed with other things?
Yes, yes, they were. And Pioneer were the folks that had the issue. They manufacture sporting goods. And then one of their issues was not only the control of the dogs outside, and that was, you know, controlled through the P posts, et cetera. Also, if, if there are dogs, you know, basically, fatalities is the word, but early in the morning, they're transported out, and that was one of their fears, that, you know, people would see that occurring, and that occurs very early in the morning, when, when, you know, when it's a situation. It occurs very early in the morning, and then they bring tarps, and, you know, so, basically, their fears, you know, didn't manifest themselves, because it's controlled, and it's masked, I guess. It's happening, but you don't really know it's happening. And there's also orca, and then there's upper baby. And upper baby, in Curves, you know, they've, they've had different events with them, where they know them. Some of the folks bring their animals actually to the, to the clinic. So, it's been, it's been good. With that, if you've got any questions, I think I covered everything, I just wanted to kind of be comprehensive.
So, in your, in your application for the hearing, Jeff, you talk about, you kind of put quotes around that all buildings not used for residence be placed a minimum of forty feet. Is that, is that?
That's one of the, I just used a number of, like, eight. That's, what that has to do with is, the difference between the, what I believe is the intent of the bylaw that you can actually see, is whether it's a, you know, a horse pen, you know, a shed, a stable, a corral, as opposed to an existing actual building. Because we don't propose to place a building anywhere. So, I'm not saying, ha ha, we get out of it, but it's more, I think that that's really strong evidence that this isn't applicable to, to an existing building in an industrial zone.
One of the things that you pointed out at the last hearing, and you pointed it out again this evening, is that either the wording of the current bylaw, or some of its provisions really aren't as well thought out as you'd like for this area. And our struggle, as you know, is that we can't, we can't amend the bylaw.
Right.
And we recognize that, and one of the things that, that I thought was going to help resolve this is you were going to actually get it proposed, and then get these issues changed, and it didn't happen. So, we are stuck with this, with the bylaw. And as I understand it, you are asking for a use variance. Is that correct?
I believe that we don't need the use variance. I see it more as just the waiver, where it's a special condition, but I would say that it's not applicable in this, in this instance.
How do we waive a provision of the bylaw other than giving a variance?
Yeah, that was one question.
procedurally, what's, what is the, what are the findings that we need to make if we're not?
Didn't you find that it complies if the use itself is located that many feet from the property line? So, where the individual unit is loc, is, complies with that special condition to the use table? So, it's related to the use, it's not really a dimensional standard. It's not contained in the dimensional section of the bylaw.
Right.
The use itself is, in fact, more than forty feet from front side yard.
All right, so the northern corner of the use, this is what we'd have to, and it talks about buildings, so I'm going to assume that the pen is exempt from that. So, the northern corner of the demised premises to the side, because it talks about front and side yard setbacks, so this would be the front.
Right.
This is clearly a side, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Does it meet that, does it meet that standard? That you just?
Where, where in the building is the?
So, I'm looking, you know, I'm looking, I'm looking at this, right?
Do you have the merril planned, that's the last one?
Yeah.
So, if we look at it with merril on the bottom, so we're looking at it, and then the, the compass rose is at the top, and north is now to the right, when you're looking at that. Joe, that would be the absolute last page in the entire package.
Yeah, got it.
So, what happens is, you can see where it says locate at exterior door, and that actually has to do with, well, that is on the unit. If you look at the, look to the right or to the north, that corner of the building is, I believe, thirty, I want to say thirty-five feet from that property line.
Yeah.
And then the property line goes in a diagonal manner and goes away. And I believe if they go out and they actually measure that, it's, you know, got the forty feet. Do you go from the inside of the block wall? Do you go from the outside? But it's, you know, that basically is the.
Well, it talks about the building, so, so I'm just trying to say, you're, you're, the interpretation you'd like, or one interpretation you'd like us to consider, is that the forty-foot standard should, should be applicable to just the, just the portion of the building that this, this use is being used in. Is that a fair statement?
If, if you, if you do not agree with what I had said earlier about the placement, because we are, we are placing nothing. This is, this is a use, right? The, the, if we say it's going to be animal hospital, we shall not place any non-residential structures within the forty feet. We, we absolutely will not place any residential structures within forty feet. This is, this is a completed, you know, fully, fully closed envelope, you know, building.
This is, this is a completed, you know, fully, fully closed envelope, you know, building which is subject to, you know, all permits, codes, everything. So that's, that's the way that we think that you folks can say, you can look at this, you can ask and just actually look at that special condition and ask, are we placing anything? And the answer is quite clearly no.
Yeah. Okay. But is it fair to say that you're not, you're not 100% sure if we did a measurement from the, the line that shows the, how the space is demised on the north side, and we carried that over to the side yard? Are we, I'm asking the question?
And this is the reason that I'm, whether I said it, there was a, this is the Merrill Plan, which there was an earlier plan, some number?
Three, five feet.
We'll grab there.
Some number of years earlier. I believe that the dimension from that corner was thirty-five feet. And then I want to say that there's another plan that is, say, thirty-six feet. It's, you know, it's, it's?
I don't recall, we talked about a side yard setback issue the last time.
We didn't. We were talking about a front yard.
Strictly the front yard.
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just seeing if?
In the front yard, it's over, it's well over a hundred feet. The building itself, I believe, is, I want to say thirty-nine or thirty-eight feet off of Sharp Street.
Right.
Or the right of way of Sharp Street. Sharp Street's eighty feet wide.
Thirty-nine from Sharp Street.
Okay, thirty-nine.
It's thirty-four at that back northwest corner of the building, according to the last application that was filed.
Okay.
We have a?
So it's not clear, it's not clear even with the, with the kind of diagonal property line that, that they would meet the forty-foot if, I'm just, I'm looking for just?
I don't know that these are just scale.
So if that's the case, then really, the, the, the only way to grant relief would be the place the building issue, right? Is that fair?
Yeah.
I'm just trying to understand what the options are.
I believe so. I think if I look at this and, you know, there was, there was like a tape measure that was in the field, they're going with where the line was, they used the thirty-four, and, you know, it was like thirty-nine to the outside, you know?
Yeah, I think you got?
Forty and a half to the inside, but I wouldn't?
I think you'd have to do it from the outside.
Yeah.
Okay.
So placement is, you know, I just?
That's your theory.
I go to it, and I wouldn't be?
So all buildings not used for residence shall be placed a minimum of forty feet. And so obviously, this is not being used for residence.
Right.
And is it, is it located and you place within forty feet? And I guess the arg, I don't want to say argument, the position that you've taken before is you've got to really look at where they're using the property.
Right.
And what I need you to advise the building commissioner, who's sitting right here, is the next application that comes, they just say, we're going to carden off the area, so we're not going to use the part that would otherwise cause the infraction.
But that wouldn't have to do with the placement of buildings. So that, I, I don't, I don't, if they go into an existing building and they just carden something off, I, I think, you know, it's, is it, remember, we talked about that early, and I said, you know, arguably, maybe someone could make that argument, that's, that's not what these folks, you know, that's, if someone wants to do something disingenuous like that, I guess they're going to. These folks are coming in, it's an existing, it's an existing building, they're not placing anything. And I think, and that's the other piece of the equation, if you count the entire building or a portion of the building, this doesn't come under the dimensional regulations. This is specifically tied to the use.
Exactly. That's why it's a use variance.
No.
That's exactly the point, though.
If they placed anything, they would have to be, that would have to be the use variance. They are not, it's existing.
Then I'm missing what you mean by place.
Place a new structure. I think he's talking about if they come in and they're placing, it says buildings. They're constructing a new building. And he's saying they're not. And one of the issues is, does that mean that this, that interpretation would open this up to go anywhere in any existing building? This use could go anywhere.
Right, exactly.
So, and our concern, you know, I think what we, what we were talking about at our prior hearing on this, however long ago that was, was that we were discussing whether or not, if we had the professional, if we thought this came under the professional office use, if someone could open up a clinic as you're proposing or, whereas is currently operating, on the second floor of a building in the square. I think that was, that was the example.
That's right.
And we started talking that through, and I don't think the board was comfortable that, that, that outcome would be, would be permitted. But then we never really sort of finished that, and then?
The application was withdrawn.
Yeah, the application was withdrawn. So I think the issue, you know, one of the things we have to think about is what, as Joe points out, when the next applicant comes in front of the building commissioner, there's an understanding or a standard that's been, that's been established by this board, and we just need to understand what the potential, what the possible consequences of that are.
And I understand with the four-ten, that, right, you can, you can think through different consequences. We actually talked about that that evening, and just, not that that exact is going to happen, but just the process of injured animals, bringing them in some weigh, you know, two hundred pounds. I think Dr. Johnson came up with a bunch of reasons that that, that wouldn't happen, but I know that was just being used as an example of unintended consequences.
Yes.
I think in this instance, and, you know, I, I understand that you're feeling that the bylaw has a vulnerability if you say, okay, we're good on four-ten, let's wait until next town meeting. I totally understand that. We've, we've talked that through, which is, you know, a big reason, we spoke a lot with, with Mike, with Emily, trying to go through what happened, where do we go from here? In going through, going through everything on the placement, the history, I believe that if you folks look at it and adopt, you know, basically, what, what we are requesting, that that's well within your discretion. I think that it's supported by the plain language. It doesn't have to do with, we are not placing anything, and it was clearly, if you read and I've attached it from the 1964 town meeting, it has to do with farms, and it has to do with, you know, animal husbandry. It's, it's very obvious to us, when you read it, and I think it will be to you as well, that it has to do with animals that are there in buildings not used for residential. So, I mean, that's, you're not going to keep animals in, you know, offices and things of that nature. That it had to do with animals that are in a residential zone, because it says otherwise not used residential. It's obvious that it was in the residential zone. And, you know, looking at what we've got, I mean, the big distinction on this clinic, and it's already all locked in with the site plan review, is that there's not going to be any overnight usage. When, when folks go home and the staff goes home, this place is empty. And, you know, it's not going to be a situation that would go into, again, the placement of non-residential uses. I think that this is something that, you can look at it, as far as, you know, whether you're exposed to precedent, whatnot, you know, I can tell you that if, if you went through the planning director's memorandum, that all of the points that she brings up, and, I mean, it's got to be four pages long, all resonate, all of the problems, the issues she raises, the placement of buildings issue as well. So, so I think that this is something that we, we recognize now in hindsight, and it's obviously a situation where we're trying to fit a controlled, modern use into our bylaw, which is maybe a little stale in some of those areas. It's just simply not up to speed. And I think that the creation of, for example, three-eight, three-point-eight A, which has to do with the clinic distinguished from the hospital, which is three-point-eight, which is in the, the human realm, and we talked about that, that caught up with where everything is going, and we saw that with the bone and muscle center. So that resonates well. But on the veterinary side, we're not seeing the distinction between, and actually, looking through the American Veterinary Medicine Association documents that I gave you, they actually distinguish between hospitals, clinics, and then like outpatient clinics. And this is actually an outpatient clinic under their definition, which is, you know, the absolute furthest away from the hospital definition. So, so with that, I think that gives ample justification, and I can tell you that I will follow up with the planning board, you know, basically, I'm going in, speaking with them if, if they need to know, you know, what, what the problems were from, you know, a modern operator trying to, you know, go into different zones under the current bylaws, you know, some of the pitfalls, the ambiguities in the language. I can certainly do that. I can't guarantee that anything's going to change a town meeting, but as you know, if the planning board, you know, forwards a zoning change, I can't remember the last time that the town has said, no, we want to keep it the old way.
This is very complicated. Perhaps we should continue to next May.
After the zoning.
If, if, if that's what you want to, want to do, I mean, that's, that's certainly an option.
I think I have a date available.
Late May.
May of, May of 2015, I've got some availability, actually.
His calendar's very full, so I'm impressed.
I'll be around. I know for Todd.
Yeah.
I don't have a, the slightest problem with what's being proposed in this use. It's just, how the heck do we fit into the bylaw?
Right, yeah.
As it's currently written.
Right. I think that's, that's, that's well put, because I think there's two things that I want to get out of this meeting, is to the extent that we grant relief, I'd like to know the conditions that would accompany that relief. And I'm not sure, Joe, have you given us the proposed conditions in terms of, you know, hours and?
Yeah, everything, everything was, was basically run by you folks. It's all contained in the site plan, site plan approval. And, you know, basically, you're looking at, hours are, hours of operation?
Monday, eight to seven. Tuesday, eight to five. Wednesday, nine to five.
Is it at C?
So we've basically got?
Friday, ten to seven. Friday, ten to four.
Site plan review is a little bratther than that, if you don't want to limit yourself quite so much. They said Monday, yeah, Monday through Saturday, eight to nine. Sunday, eight to six.
And then we're looking at three to four appointments per hour per doctor, per shift is, you know, generally the intensity.
We usually do the?
And day surgery.
Right.
They didn't do a condition, they're noting it just in their decision. It likely was related to parking, because this is a shared parking arrangement.
Right, I see, yeah.
Day surgery is two days only, and the patients are dropped between eight and nine in the morning. That allows them, to get them in a certain time window to give enough, you know, time for recovery, et cetera, consistent with the, you know, the day clinic model. They've erected a sound wall between this unit and the unit to the south.
If that, I didn't?
And, let me see if I can go through.
Is that a condition in the planning boards?
I didn't see that in there.
No, that's, that was something that we did as part of the negotiations with the neighbors.
Right.
So there were things that occurred, you know, beyond what occurred with the planning board. But the, the hours, it's actually retrenched a little more than what is allowed. The hours are, you know, generally consistent with some of the other uses in the building. I think Curves?
They're open later.
Curves is, right, Curves is open later, so this probably stays open a little longer on some nights than the Orkin or Upper Baby, but not as late as the Curves. There was a huge number of parking surplus, if I recall. So the A-three was, you know, the A-three was really good. The planning board only had a few comments, and many of the comments had to do with some of the vegetation around the parking lot. Sharp Street is, you know, it's eighty. I mean, it's designed for like evacuation of the airbase during the Cold War or something.
I'm aware many people in town don't even know where it is or have never been there or know that it's?
I'll tell you, go up there now, the William Delahunt Parkway comes through.
Yes, it does, right. Wow.
Is, is the ownership, are they tenants, or is this a condominium? What's the relationship?
They are tenants, and you'll remember that Garth Hoffman was here last time. I spoke to him. He's, he's actually been at meetings all week. I spoke to him, and he said, what do you need to know? I'll go if you think it's necessary. And he just, when I said that they've talked to people, there haven't been any complaints, that was, not only did I talk to Dr. Johnson, but I also spoke to the owner this evening. So that's how I can, I can represent that. Everything's completed as far as, again, all the, you know, the P-posts, so you go again, plantings, et cetera. And that was the big, I would venture to say that the thought was, not necessarily the backside, where we're talking about the forty feet to the neighbor, but the concern was animals getting out of cars in the distance between the car and the front door.
Right. And the concern about, you know, other tenants having business folks coming over and dogs, right?
Right.
One of the things that helps me distinguish this from what could be future sham arrangements is that they don't own the property. So it's not as if they're structuring it for themselves to be away from the distance. And that the structure pre-existed the use coming in. It's, I'd love to go with Todd's suggestion of just having town, because it's, it's a, it's a, it's a one in our side.
That's what we were, that, I mean, look, that's what we were hoping would happen, so the town meeting, town meeting could resolve this issue. We could get some language proposed, and then it resolved.
But I'm not averse to that.
I, you know, I, I think that is, from the standpoint of doing, what's the best course for the town? I propose continuing till next May, because I think that's the best course for us right now. But?
But that argument, you're saying that these uses, which are allowed by special permit, in essence, could not be located in any industrial structure built under the existing industrial setback requirements, even if the tenant space it's occupying itself, the actual space serving the use itself complies with the special condition?
So it could be, as long as it met the forty-foot requirement of?
As long as the building was built elective, you know?
Right.
Which chances are, those buildings were built to comply with the setbacks for the industrial district, not for the setbacks for a use that at one point was not even allowed in that, that district.
Right.
So we, I mean, right now, if in fact, on the forty-foot, the forty-foot setback, I'm thinking that they might just miss on that. Even if we just look at their demise premises, we measure the outs, it might be thirty-nine feet, so they wouldn't satisfy that criteria. That's going to leave us with putting our reliance on this, this no new building issue, the placement of a new building. But that opens up that any existing building could, could have this, and that's, that's where?
Upon issues of a special permit, yeah.
Yeah. So, so I?
I'm not, I'm not, I read the word placed as located, not about that this?
Not a new building.
Right, not a new, I just?
That's why I asked Jeff. I mean, he, he?
Yeah, it doesn't say loc, I mean, placed. I thought that was, that's rather unique language. Because, because it's not a dimensional. Dimensional has, you know, when I read section four and I'm thinking of dimensions, I'm thinking of the locations of things. This has to do with the placement of something for a particular use.
All buildings not used for residence shall be placed.
Play, so not, not?
But if you go that?
It's not related to the overall building. It's related to the location of the use within the building, right? I mean, is there any way to confirm that measurement? I'm sorry, I don't, it doesn't look like those reduced plans are to scale. I mean, I kind of eyeballed it. It looks like it could be thirty-nine, forty feet.
If, I mean, if?
Can you confirm that?
If we?
If it could be confirmed, is that something that you're willing to entertain before May?
Or if we continue, I could always request to come in earlier?
Let's do that.
Okay.
Yep.
Yep. We were really hoping you'd correct the, I mean, I just don't think you're going to get a use variance. You're not going to meet the criteria. So, and unfortunately, this is not a dimensional, this is pulled in through the use.
Exactly. I think, you know, I mean, we've, we've identified, we've tracked, we've tracked it. I am confident in reading it in context that this was, you know, sheds and barns in the residential district. That was all...
That's the genesis.
That was the genesis.
I'm not disputing that.
Right.
We should find out if there's anyone here in the audience who came for this hearing that has comments or questions. What's your date in May that you're...
Any, any...
No, really.
Well, give yourself a little after town meeting, because no one's going to want to look at each other.
You don't want to look at this agenda before May?
Well, I've got a question. The Attorney General has to approve zoning...
Changes.
Which usually comes down in August.
So we're in June.
Retro act though.
But will they act without...
We can always make conditional upon...
Will they act without knowing?
Biggie approval.
Okay, so let's, how about this? Let's, let's continue this to either September or October, and you'll just, we'll have an update at that point and make a further...
And you'll make, and we'll get, we'll get a confirmed measurement so we can resolve the issue.
Excellent.
From the building exterior.
What do you prefer in terms of September or October?
All right.
Let's make sure Jeff is not away on vacation.
September or October this year?
This year.
Okay, all right.
This year.
Yes, yes, not 2015.
All right. So we have a September meeting. We have September seventeen, seven thirty.
Okay, sounds good.
That work for your schedule, Jeff?
One second. I don't think I've ever jumped that far ahead on my apple here.
Jeff, could you...
What's October what?
September seventeen. Could you get that to us from Ryder?
Yep, absolutely.
So that's Wednesday, September seventeen.
I'm actually on trial.
So pick another day that works.
Please.
October fifteen, seven PM.
October fifteen, you said?
Yeah.
Okay, seven PM, so I'll accept the motion to continue this, and we'll need the applicant's written consent on the extension.
Moved. So moved.
Second.
On favor.
Great, thanks very much. Appreciate it.
Who we got next?
Okay. Next item on the agenda. Where's the folder? John and Claire Farrell of fifty-three Gilbert Street, Quincy, for a finding under Chapter Forty-eight, Section Six, and Section three I, one C of the zoning bylaw, that the property at, excuse me, one fifty-one Levitt Street, Residence District C, is a buildable lot. Alternately, the petitioners request a variance from the frontage definition of Section Six of the zoning bylaws, which are legally necessary, to construct a single-family dwelling on the property, booking one fifty-one Levitt Street, Residence District C.
Hi, my name's, no problem at all. Seems like a long evening. My name's Attorney Jeff DeLeese. I'm with the law firm Orenberger Associates in Situate. I am here with my clients, John and Claire Farrell, as well as Jeff Morse from Ross, from Morse Engineering. I thought that what I probably, would probably make sense is for, is for me to have Jeff just kind of give you guys an overview of what this property looks like and what we're seeking to do. And then what I can do at that juncture is kind of pick up and let you know what my thoughts are.
Great.
Quick correction for the record. My name is Greg Morse. My father is Jeff, so I'll give that one to you. The property we're here for, one fifty-one Levitt Street, I've represented on a plan here for you. You'll see the property line here is shown in full. It's located in the Residence C zoning district. Levitt Street is on the left side of the plan here. It's bordered all the way around by residentially zoned and developed properties. This lot in size is forty-one thousand three hundred twenty-seven square feet. Forty-one thousand two hundred and two square feet of that is upland area. There is a very, very small, isolated upland area right here, shown on the plan. To date, what we've done is we've gone out to this site, we've performed percolation tests with Board of Health, we've submitted a septic plan to the Board of Health, we've gone to the Conservation Commission, we have received approval through a notice of intent filing and order of conditions on the property. We're here before you for a frontage request. The property right now has a linear distance measurement along Levitt Street of a hundred and fifty feet. The property was subdivided out of a larger property back in nineteen seventy-six, consisting of a four-lot subdivision. This is the remaining of those four lots to be built on. The other three lots are all occupied by single-family residences at this point in time. I turn it back over to Jeff.
So as Greg said, this, this lot was created in nineteen seventy-six, and at the time of its creation, in that, in the mid-seventies, it had a hundred and fifty feet of linear frontage on Levitt Street, which it does today, and that was the frontage requirement. In preparation for this evening's hearing, I had quite a few communications with, with the Hingham Tax Assessor, and it was determined that in January of nineteen eighty-six, January first, nineteen eighty-six, the property increased in value from, for tax valuation purposes, from eighteen thousand dollars to a hundred thousand dollars. Don't know why that happened in eighty-six as opposed to seventy-six, but it happened in eighty-six nonetheless. The conclusion to be made there is that since there was no other change with this lot, that it was valued as a buildable lot. And the reason why I bring that up is because later in that year, in nineteen eighty-six, the town, at town meeting, voted to amend its bylaw such that the definition of frontage, not the frontage requirement of linear, of distance of a hundred and fifty feet, but the definition itself was actually added to, and a phrase was added to it, which requires this circle of eighty percent of the minimum lot size frontage tangent to the frontage street. And that particular amendment, the effect of that on this, on this lot, was that it made this lot such that it did not conform with the bylaw as amended. And so, it just so happens that one of the other lots that was created during the division of nineteen seventy-six, which was this lot right here, Lot Three, shown on a Land Corps plan, was in nineteen ninety, ninety-five, the town issued a building permit for that particular lot to Joe Kennedy. You guys probably know Joe. I know he's a fairly prominent figure in town. And there was no variance that was required at that time, or at least obtained at that time, as a consequence to put that house there. Fast forward now to the year two thousand thirteen. My clients are interested in buying the property. They do some diligence here in town, in Town Hall, and still are understanding it's a buildable lot. In two thousand thirteen, they purchased the lot for four hundred and thirty thousand dollars, and they intend to construct their home on this lot. And as Greg indicated, they obtained various approvals, hired multiple professionals, and now they're being told that some form of zoning relief is necessary to actually get a building permit. And that's why we're here today, is, I had two requests, and actually, the application as submitted didn't actually say a finding that the lot is a buildable lot. It kind of went into a little more detail than that. I'm seeking two things, well, actually, one thing. Initially, I'm seeking a finding, that this is a pre-existing, non-conforming use of land, in that, in that we're seeking to alter that use by putting a house on it. And in the alternative, should that be something that, in the appetite of the board, the board is not interested in granting, then we're requesting variance. But the overwhelming preference is a finding. The entire basis for the finding is that this was laid out on a plan as a buildable lot, and that it was taxed as a buildable lot prior to the change in the bylaw, and that as a consequence, it was being used as a buildable lot. It just didn't have a house on it. But no different than operating a business and taking and selling merchandise, here, what we're doing is paying taxes. And so, what, what we're seeking is a finding to basically alter that use under Section Forty-eight, Chapter Forty-eight, Section Six, in your relevant bylaw, to put a house on it. One of the things to note is, this is kind of an unusually shaped lot. The closed house is way back at the rear of the lot, and one of the reasons is because of its unusual shape, and there really was no other place to put it. And I just note that it's about two hundred and seventy-four feet from, from Levitt Street is where we're seeking to put this house. Additionally, the rear, the rear setback would be approximately double than what's required in the zone. And so, we believe that, you know, this is obviously a residential zone, there's, doesn't seem to be any detriment to the zone to put a house on a lot that has, in fact, a hundred and fifty feet of frontage linear distance-wise. This could be one of those peculiar situations where you guys were talking about earlier, about some of the language in the bylaw. One of the things that I, I kind of came across as I was researching for this evening was, kind of reminded me, it's almost elemental, but the concept of frontage and the purpose of frontage is for access for emergency vehicles. And that's the reason why towns in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, you know, require a certain minimum frontage for lots. I think it's pretty irrefutable that we, you know, we don't really have to worry about emergency vehicles accessing this property. So I'm happy to take any questions that you have and take it from there.
Can you talk to me about the ownership when, when the lot was laid out in seventy-six?
Yeah.
Who owned the lot and the, and the buddy lots?
Okay. So, the lot in nineteen seventy-six was owned by, I actually have the, I know the last names, but I just wanted to make sure the first name's correct, nobody's got one person wrong tonight. Antonio and Emma Rizzotto owned the property. And I actually, I'd like to help you to just have a handout for you guys, so you can see. This is the Land Corps plan that, following A and R, the developer and the registration of the property. And...
So this is Lot Two?
This is Lot Two, okay. Shown on the plan. The two adjoining parcels, Lot One and Lot Three, Lot One was fairly immediately deeded out to Richard and Lynn Rizzotto in nineteen seventy-six. And Lot Three was not deeded out until it was deeded to Mr. Kennedy, who ultimately obtained that building permit in the mid-nineties. So at the time of the zoning change, the lot was held in common ownership with parcel, with Lot Three.
So you've got your merger question.
So we have, we have a, not necessarily a merger issue, is Forty-eight, Section Six has a grandfathering provisions for lots. And what the, what the provision essentially says is that lots that are held in common ownership with other adjoining lots, any increase in lot frontage requirements would be grandfathered for five years. And so, in, in, in that's in the situation that the lot is held in common ownership with an adjoining lot, specifically. I don't think that that provision applies to the situation, because I don't read the bylaw change as being an increase in a hundred and fifty feet, the, the increase in the frontage requirements. What happened in the zoning bylaw was an amendment to a definition that was outside of your dimensional provision of your bylaw. And so, that's why I think that this is a pre-existing, non-conforming scenario.
But that's why, help me to understand why it's pre-existing, non-conforming, because at the time the bylaw changed, which was in eighty-six, the lot conformed to the new bylaw because they were merged...
Right.
For purposes of zoning. That's, I need you to help me to get past that.
Then it, then it was subdivided.
No, 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 it was subdivided prior.
It was held in common ownership, so...
But it was a bill, it was, it was a lot that was a separate, buildable lot that was laid out on a plan. And I think that that is the reason why, I mean, you could read a merger into that, but I felt as if the board had already established a precedent on that issue by allowing that separate lot, ten years after the bylaw change, to not have to be subject to a merger situation. And I think it's because the lots are separately laid out on a plan...
But that's never deeded a merger.
As a buildable lot.
Merge lot, I mean, the issue is they're always set out separately on a plan. The question is whether it's common ownership.
Right.
And so, I, I don't know how this is pre-existing, non-conforming if, when the bylaw changed, the lots were in common ownership. And so, then with, with that merger, for zoning purposes, there's no nonconformance. So there's no pre-existing nonconformance.
Right. And the, and the pre-existing nonconformance that I'm looking at...
Okay.
Is, is a different, a different scenario.
Which is...
Which is, which is the fact that the lot was used as a separate, buildable lot by virtue of the fact that taxes were paid on it as a separate, buildable lot, along with the separate, buildable lot and the taxes that were paid on Lot, Lot Three.
This is a lot like down there, I mean?
So the tax, but, but the tax argument, there's, there's, if, if there's an injustice on the way it's taxed, it doesn't carry over and dictate zoning?
No, I know it doesn't dictate zoning, but I think that it's, it's instructive on, on the issue, because it goes to, it goes to use. If, you know, the use is the fact that you're, you're paying for, you're using it as a buildable lot at that time.
But I think, you know, I can look at it, but most merger cases, the property owner's paying taxes on both lots. And they're holding one, they're hoping to sell it or use it, whatever, and they're laid out separately, but it's a merger. And when you look at whether or not the dimensional requirements are met, you look at the merged lot. So then, it's not separated, the ownership's not separated till after the zoning change. And so, there's no pre-existing, nonconforming.
Well, that, that brings me to the question as to why it is that a building permit would have issued on Lot Three.
But I don't think that matters, because, I mean, one possibility is, let's do it on Lot Three, and Lot Two's going to be held for grazing of cows, or, I mean, it's, I'm not trying to speculate, but it doesn't matter. The only issue is whether or not there was a merger. And I think that's, again, I think that's relatively common. If you can point me to some merger cases that will go the other way, that would be instructive, but I'm not aware of them. I think they all go as, the ones that I know about, all go as I'm suggesting.
Okay. What I'd prefer to do then is to actually take closer look at the merger question...
Yeah.
Before you guys actually deal with the issue of variance. Because I think that, I think that, I think it makes sense to do it from that perspective, because I know that the laws... Because I know that the law's changing this field fairly quickly.
I agree.
Okay?
So it's, good.
I think on the question of variance, I seem to recall we've done this recently on a case of, it was a waterfront parcel, I forget what street it was at. But it was, again, it was this tangent question in measuring this, the frontage on the setback line rather than at the street. And we did find that we could grant a variance in that case.
We can pull it out, I was aware of it.
Yeah. I just, I just can't remember the street or whatever.
Why don't we look at the merger, let's run that first.
Yeah, but, but we should do that as well.
And to the extent that that situation, Emily, if you come across that, if you'd let me know.
I'll try to run it down.
And I will rack my brains and try and remember what street that was.
When do we want to continue this too?
How much time do you want? Let me ask.
When's your, when's your next hearing? How about the hearing after that?
When's our next hearing?
You never go to the next hearing, do you?
So June thirtieth is kind of close and that's mostly going to be SUV deliberation.
June thirtieth is, I can't do it anyway, so.
June seventh, you now have seven items.
July seventh.
July seventh, sorry. So July seventh.
I thought you guys were talking about two thousand fifteen.
July twenty-third, you have the cell tower and-
You do not want to wait on that one.
Totally something else. Joining me with the planning board on July twenty-eighth, I guess we haven't scheduled yet.
I am available, I don't know what your pleasure is. If we could limit it to one meeting in August, that would be great.
Yes, yeah.
You're not around on the twentieth.
I'm just out that third week.
Which I think would have been our regular.
I'm out of the country.
So the week before the Wednesday would be the fourteenth, right?
Thirteen.
Thirteen.
Thirteenth, let me check.
How does that work for your schedule?
August thirteenth?
Yes.
That's okay.
Works for me.
I can do that.
So on the thirteenth at seven thirty?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty.
We would be first on the list.
You will be first on the list.
Great.
Unless there's some emergency.
Okay, thank you.
So do we need their consent for a continuance?
Yeah.
So there's some form, because we have to make a decision.
Of course.
Okay, so at the applicant's request, I'll accept the motion to continue this to the thirteenth of August at seven thirty P.M.
I'll move.
There's a second.
I'll second that.
And before I do, is there anyone in the audience who is here wanting to provide comments on this?
All right.
I apologize for not asking before. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We are continued.
Thank you very much. August thirteenth.
Seven thirty.
Yes. And if there's something that you can get to us ahead of time to look at, terrific. Thank you.
New construction.
What else?
God.
Oh, God. Oh, my God.
Do you remember that case? It was a, it was a, God, the guy was a vice president with Avid Technology.
Yeah, but I, I thought it was a question of whether or not it was measured the right way. I didn't think we granted a variance.
We didn't grant a variance from the-
I thought it was measurement issue.
And we figured out the way to calculate it.
Because we don't read, we don't grant frontage.
He knows.
No, right, right. It was a simple, I mean, it seems like, God, a hundred and fifty feet of ground on one street. End of discussion.
Maybe the guy made a mistake with the building permit.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. No, our building commissioners never make mistakes. We know that didn't happen.
What did he do?
Just your predecessors.
Well.
I mean, I, he seemed surprised as well.
I want to get out of here.
Yes, we're gonna-
This is a meeting. Not a hearing.
End of hearing. So this is not even a, it's not even on our, on our agenda.
It's not?
It's, it's end of hearing, discussion on Blackrock Phase Three completion report from building commissioner. Did Susan want to be here for this?
Susan's on her way in, I think. So you're receiving your packets, a certification from developers engineer that Phase Three is complete, as well as a small set of as-built plans. We've been looking at it. Mike has a brief report to share with you.
Okay.
But also, I will distribute something that Susan prepared. Do you have the version? No, I didn't get my message. Somehow I emailed it to you, the comments. I cut off, so now I have, so I brought it. Okay.
Oh, you're so good, Susan.
Well, I realized late in the day, when I opened up my email to you, I must have, we have like one of those medevac nerves-
Right.
And it took all the time. So, okay. So this is all conditions of every zoning board and planning board-
Right.
-decision related to the Blackrock development.
Well, why don't we, what is it that the applicant is seeking? He's not an applicant, he's, he's-
Right. The applicant was seeking to attain more than eighty-five percent of the COs within Phase Three. In order to do that, under section IC of the bylaw, they filed their as-built plans, an engineer's certificate, and then the building commissioner submits his report-
Right.
-to the board pertaining to his inspection of the buildings and the roadways. So we've got that. We were out yesterday and have been looking at lots of plans and probably have to have some discussion. But, but, yeah, I'll turn it over to you.
The floor is yours.
Again, I was not here when the project started.
Were you playing golf when the project started?
No, many of us weren't. Emily and I went out there yesterday and took a look at Phase Three. They did put the final coat of pavement on there. I do agree with the engineer's report as far as how the roof came out. I agree with the, the as-bills of the foundations and things. They did create some new lighting. I agree with the lighting engineer. They still have some, some grass issues to do along the sides of the roads to finish those up. As far as the drainage issues, I had not, I have not talked to Abby about if she has any concerns with the drainage on Phase Three.
Yep.
The engineer said that the infrastructure, the water pipes and things were done by the water company inspected. They also said that Hingham Light inspected the conduits for the lighting and things. However, Bill, the wiring inspector, he came in to start doing the inspections sometime after Phase One. So from what I'm hearing, parts of, this is what he told me again, I'm not, I don't know. Parts of Phase One, they did not use the correct conduit. They're using Schedule eighty now. And some of the pipes in Phase One were not covered with concrete. But again, I don't know. But I know that what these guys are doing since I've been here, the homes are, they're first-class homes. If we go in to do a frame inspection, maybe we find some minor issues, a couple of nails are missing out of the choice hangers, or maybe there's some, you know, shim is missing here, or maybe an anchor bolt needs to be tightened up or something. But they build a first-class home. Since I've been here, I have not received a complaint from owners of the homes. I have received some complaints from the association. I have not got back to those gentlemen and I have not got back to their attorneys because I'm still trying to wrap my head around it. I believe they're appealing to the board because I have not got back to them.
Received an application today.
I believe it came in this week. I will probably be getting a letter out to them the next week or so, just to let them know where I am on the inspections and things. I do apologize for not, for not getting back to them, but coming into this project is just a tremendous amount of drawings that I do not have and I did not witness. And if I haven't seen it to do the inspection, I can't really comment on it.
I could.
So, if I have any questions, I will answer.
So we, you received an appeal, application from the trust related to some requests for enforcement that the towns received in recent weeks, maybe a month and a half or so.
Is that, is that what this is?
No.
Oh, this is your report?
No, it's no issue, okay.
This is not, okay.
No. The issues raised by the trust, so to the extent this isn't a public hearing, I'm just going to try to summarize and then you guys can decide whether you want to look more at it or not.
Well, let me just stop. Susan, is it-
So I, I don't-
One second. Is it appropriate for Emily to discuss what was filed today before, since they called for hearing, when that hearing in fact has not been noticed?
It wasn't, it wasn't filed, you got a filing thing? No, are you talking about the April nineteenth, you're not talking about the April nineteenth letter to Mike?
Well, we received an appeal to the zoning board today.
Based on what?
Based on inaction from those requests.
So to the extent-
By the time this letter to Mike Clancy is dated May nineteenth. Is there one earlier than that?
Yeah, there's like an April one, a May one. They finally filed a actual zoning enforcement request on June eleventh, but, but that was after filing letter requests.
But the, the earlier letters, at least what I've received, were all addressed to the Board of Appeals in connection with the, the request for, you know, this, the eighty-five percent. The first, unless I don't, I may not have everything, I may not have the complete file, but it seems that the first, the only letter, at least that I've received a copy of, that's addressed to the building commissioner, is dated May nineteenth.
There were, well, he has fourteen days to respond, right, before that he, they can file an appeal. So I think that, so it may be the May nineteenth one, but I do believe there's some correspondence that went to the building department that did not go to my office, so I may not have everything there.
So I may not have the complete file.
So we'll have to pull everything together.
Okay.
But the overall issues go back to issues that you've heard about in the past.
Susan, the only reason I stopped is I want to make sure that it's appropriate or not to discuss something that was filed today, where someone has requested a public hearing, that hearing has not yet been noticed and now we're about to discuss it.
Well, okay, so this is-
So that's why I stopped.
Right, right. So the situation that the board is in is you're being asked to accept the report of the building commissioner and make a determination that they've satisfied what we call the eighty-five percent rule so that they can, the developer can get their certificates of occupancy. Similar-
Well, let me, I don't believe that that's true.
Yeah.
But I don't believe we make that finding.
No.
Under, under IC two, the building commissioner makes that finding and makes that report. We don't make any finding.
And presents it to us. I don't think we have to make a determination. I agree a hundred percent with you.
Okay, right. So detail, so not, until the building commissioner has presented the Board of Appeals with a written report that it has been completed in accordance with the approved development plan or the approved stage of development plan.
Right.
And he has to file the report.
Right, so he's now filed it and I think what I'm hearing is that he's not yet made the determination that it's been completed in accordance with the plans. He's, the wiring needs to be-
That was in earlier phases, not Phase Three.
Oh, not Phase Three?
Right.
So for Phase Three, is it your view that it's been completed in accordance with?
Correct.
Okay, so then he submitted, we're not asked to make any judgment about whether or not we've examined his report and we think he's right or not. It's just-
Okay, right. So then I would say to the, he's presented it to you.
Right.
To the extent there are individuals who believe that his determination is inaccurate-
Yeah.
Yes, and they're appealing, then yes, that's a separate.
Right, that's not for us.
That would have to be noticed.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So it's premature.
I mean, that's fine. I mean, my, my, you know, I had received a request to review all of the correspondence that had come in back and forth from the developer, the trustees, et cetera, in preparation for this hearing you were having tonight without maybe, without necessarily having the agenda item and understanding the scope of what you were covering tonight. I mean, if that's it, he's just making his report, then there's really, that's, I mean, if that's all that this is, then it's probably-
Well, that's all the bylaw provides for.
Provides for.
Yeah.
Right.
I mean, we can certainly ask you questions about the report, but if you've made the determination it's been completed in accordance with the approved development plan or approved stage development plan, then that's all that, and if someone wants to appeal that to us-
Which they have, right?
Well, no, they have not-
I'm hearing. They aren't responding.
Great, great.
And I have not seen, I haven't seen everything that's been submitted to the building commissioner, so I have no basis on which to comment that.
But are they arguing there, they are aggrieved by the inability to obtain a permit or enforcement action?
Enforcement action.
Okay. Because that's what the statute demands.
So, I mean, what I've done, but it may not be what the board is taking up and it'll just be held for the time being, was similar to what we've started doing on some of the other projects that have been around for a long time. We had to do it recently in Back River, et cetera, and, you know, which I coined out in the hall a few minutes ago as my, you know, forensic permit review, which is trying to recreate and then take, and that's what Emily handed out, but it's not, it sounds like it may wait until you're having a hearing on enforcement.
Right.
Is take, consolidate all of the conditions and modifications into one document somewhat annotated so that you can kind of have one picture with how, because Emily had to do a spreadsheet literally to try to track the modification-
And Susan, this is impressive, so.
Probably looks more impressive than-
Yeah, okay.
But it's really just a cut and pasting to put it all in one document and try to break it down and see, and see where each of the conditions stands from an overall compliance standpoint.
Okay.
It sounds like procedurally, do we have two different things? We have, we have the report that Mike just delivered to us and which we can discuss or not, or take note, you know, maybe he's complied with that provision of the bylaw. We have an appeal to us on an enforcement action that is obviously related to this but has its own set of procedural requirements, right? And so which do we take up first? What-
The only thing on your agenda is to receive the report of the building commissioner.
And is this the report that you're talking about?
Right.
Todd, can I take a copy from Mike?
Right here?
No, it's his report.
So, and we're talking about, just so I'm clear, Blackrock Phase Three.
Yeah.
And so you agree with the engineer's report with the exception of the installation of the electrical conduits. So that is Phase Three.
No, Phase Three or Phase One, you said, link.
This is, this report says Phase Three.
That's correct.
So it's Phase Three.
But was it-
But he made reference to the conduit in earlier. You made reference to the conduit in Phase One, which is what I'm, that's why I'm asking the question.
But so, but is, is the electrical, are the electrical conduits-
In Phase Three?
In Phase Three.
Oh, good.
The disagreement was that Hingham Light inspected it, when in fact, the electrical inspector for the town, in the building department inspected it. That was your comment, I believe?
Oh, okay, so the distinction is, you say the wiring, William Nickerson inspected the underground conduits, not the Hingham Municipal Lighting Plan. So other than that difference, do you agree with, with the-
Engineer?
With the engineer's report?
Exactly.
Okay. So then I, then I think this is, this report does what it needs to for purposes of bylaw.
Right.
And to the extent that someone has an issue in terms of whether something needs to be enforced or not, and they filed something, we'll take it up, but we're certainly not going to hear it before it's been properly noticed.
Right, right.
And- And, uh, I, I'm not, I don't think there's anything else that we should be doing.
Okay.
So. Yeah?
The enforcement is regarding, I believe.
Okay, so just so clear, I'm not, we're not going to be talking about the enforcement? I just said that until that note, hearing has been publicly noticed, we can't have that discussion.
I just want to clarify, the enforcement is in regards to the eighty-five, Section IC, correct?
That's, yeah, I believe so, I've not looked at it.
What I like to talk about is not the eighty-five percent rule of the bylaws, but Phases One and Two.
Which are not before us, that's not something we're discussing here. I mean, you, if you, if, if we want to have a, what's, what's noticed on our agenda is Blackrock Phase Three completion report from the building commissioner. And we've just received that report, we've had some interaction about it. So if you'd like to talk about something separate, we can, I, I'm not sure this is, whether we should even be having that unless it's been noticed on the, our agenda.
Yeah.
This is not.
Mr. Chairman, we've been, we've been talking since October about this. We're not talking, we were talking since October about. The government requires that the condominium owners own the roads, utilities, maintain the roads, take care of, unlike the most, most of the streets in town. We just want to make sure that what we get when they leave town, we know is there. We're just looking for this report for Phases One and Two. It hasn't been done. And the reason I can say that, because they asked the group reviews, I asked them if they did. And they said, no, because IC doesn't say you have to do it for phase, so you can do it by, you can tie it on the floor.
Okay.
So, we're not talking about enforcement, we're talking about, we're approving number three.
We're not approving anything. So.
The bylaw doesn't say we approve it.
There's nothing that we're approving, that, that's a procedure, he submitted the report, we're not voting on it, we're not approving it, we're not disapproving it, he just presented it, that's the extent of what just happened.
Okay, so then my question is, Phases One and Two, what, what does we now, the owners of these roads and utilities, what are we to do? You, you, you've jumped Phases One and Two, and you've accepted Phase Three, what about One and Two? I, I, it's an honest question, I don't know the answer.
Right, right.
That's why I'm talking to you, you're the only people that can help us. We've been talking since October, we haven't had anything done.
I guess the question I would have.
I don't think the board has information about what's even.
Well, just not even talking about Phase.
Three, four times.
Even, even if you just stick to Phase Three.
Yeah.
I guess one of, one of the questions that the board might consider, and you know, I, I think, um, the building commissioner has reviewed it based on kind of, you know, his understanding of a provision that is not, I think, very well-understood in the town. Um, and so he, he uses professional judgment. But to the extent, so you have this, this clause that says that, you know, the, the development or the stage, the approved stage of the development plans shall have been fully completed. Are they fully completed if the road's built, the conduit's in there, anything else? If, to the extent that there are conditions that apply to the entire project? Is that part of compliance with, so even if you just looked at it with Phase Three, so if there is a requirement, that's a generic requirement, is it just literally looking at an as-built plan? Or is it saying, okay, are any of these conditions which may be applicable to Phase Three complied with? So the scope of what gets caught up in that, the plan's been fully completed, I guess, is something that, you know, the board may or may not have a question about, but is one of the questions that's raised by the wording of the, that provision? Does, does that make sense?
I.
I mean, so if you, if you say, let's say you're at Fa, you're at Phase Four.
Right.
You're done, the project's done, the plan's here, the plan show, the road's in, the conduit's in, whatever, everything's in. But there are substantive provisions in here that have not yet been complied with. I mean, at what point are those getting caught and tied together, I guess?
So you're saying is it phase by phase, or does the developer have the flexibility to clean up all the loose ends at the very end? Is that the question?
No, I guess, when, when is that piece getting checked? The, the actual conditions?
Right.
That are different than what's shown on the plan, on, just on the plan? When it says, refers to the development plan, is the development plan include, is this plan subject to all the conditions issued in connection with this plan? So it's just unclear, I think, is the question, and it's not, may not be the question that gets answered tonight, but I think it's part of, it's an interpretation issue, um, and I, this isn't the first project it's come up with.
Yeah.
And, you know, it's, it's something that I think the.
Okay, so let me, let me, I, I think I got what you're saying. Let me see if I can say it differently.
Better.
To the, no, I don't know, but, so to the extent that the phases are either sequential or cumulative, and we are now at Phase Three, is it possible to give a completion report on Stage Three without having also included Phases One and Two issues? Is that? Because if Sage Three stands on its own and is not dependent on anything else, then.
No, right, you're asking actually a different question, but it's still a valid question. Um, I mean, if Phase, you know, if Phase Three stands on its own, I think it's, it stands on its own.
Right.
I mean, I'll give, you know, analogy, even though it's not, it doesn't fall under this because it's a subdivision, but you know, we have a subdivision where you had a developer come in at the tail end, it was a foreclosure situation, but they come in and buy it at the tail end to do the last one-third of a very long road. The first two-thirds was not completed correctly, they're saying to town, but we don't care, we just want you to accept our third here at the end. Even though that's private and it's never been completed properly. Well, that's never going to happen, because getting to the last third of the road requires traversing the first two-thirds. So it cannot stand on its own.
Right, so that's, that's a cumulative concept.
There's a cumulative, and, and I, and it, and it may be a project by, it may be different project by project. You know, if, if the first phase of this project was on the way end, you know, and you can't, I mean, if this is on, if this Phase Three is on the back end, and you have to traverse a road through Phase One and Phase Two to get to Phase Three, let's say there was really something wrong with the road, there's giant potholes, everything else on the road, okay, I'll use an extreme example, then can you say they're good for Phase Three, even though you have to go through a hundred potholes on the road that was built in Phase One and Phase Two?
I don't think it'd be reasonable to say that.
Right, so I, you know, that's why I'm saying, it's a little complicated, it's more.
I think to, to, to answer your question, um, we're, what we just went through was to receive his report, not to make a judgment on it. And to the extent that you think the report is defective or not complete, because it needs to cover more than what's covered, then you can certainly challenge that report in, in the hearing, and then we can have that discussion. We don't have, as our bylaw is written, discretion to even reject his report. There's nothing in, in the, all we're, all we're supposed to do is listen to him. That's it. And so we can't, it's just like when you go to court, you know, some things you can file with the court can be wrong, but the clerk's got to accept it, and we are, as the clerk, if you will.
And no one's suggesting that there's anything wrong.
No, 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 I agree, but.
It's hypothetical.
But if that's the suggestion that's being made, that, you know, this is building on, on, on Phases One and Two, why don't you have that information? And that you need that in order to really be complete on Phase Three, then that's something that we could, it would be appropriate to raise with us.
I mean, my actual question was a different one, though.
Okay.
Which was, even if you're looking at Phase Three in a vacuum.
Yes.
If there are conditions within the permit.
Yes.
That apply to the entire project, do they need to be looked at in the context of have they been complied with for this phase?
Give me an example.
Yeah, I need an example.
Condition eleven.
Excuse me?
How about condition eleven?
Yeah, see, so that's one of the things that, you know, was, would come up in a bigger, but there are, over and above, whatever is in IC two, there are independent certificate of compliance requirements under the bylaw.
Right.
So for example, eleven, a certificate of compliance from the applicant's consulting engineer is provided to the zoning board of appeals as each phase of housing clusters are completed. In the event the building commissioner determines a certificate does not provide adequate assurance of compliance, the board reserves the right to hire a professional at the applicant's expense to review the work.
Okay.
So there are, there may be, over and above whatever you can see that, that the building commissioner can just review on an as-built and going on site, that may be embedded in the permit, and does, is that part of, that, it's a question. Is that part of what needs to be addressed by the applicant in their submission and reviewed by the building commissioner? Because compliance with specific written conditions is not part of what was submitted in the report. So, you know, I'm, I'm throwing out lots of questions that I'm not expecting you necessarily to have the answer to, but I'm just saying, these have to, I think it has to be thought through, and there needs to be an interpretation, because we have, we just went through this with one project, we have this project, the shipyard's coming up. Interpretation by the board in order to assist the building commissioner, I think it's going to become inevitable.
And we don't, right, conditions this way anymore. So if there's something we want done at a specific time, the condition says so. So this is required prior to issuance of a building permit, prior to issuance of half of the building permits, prior to issuance of the initial occupancy permit, whatever the stage that's appropriate, we just, but because these are old and they weren't crafted that way, we're doing the best we can, and so maybe, you know, I can work with Mike to go through this list of conditions.
That would be great.
And we'll figure out where we are on them. I don't feel that any of them are necessarily tied to a particular phase. And, and especially Phase Three. They, I think they are, you know, they're tied to the overall, we need to make sure they get done, but since they didn't tell us when, except for a particular instance.
Well, number eleven, eleven does say, as each phase of housing clusters are completed, it says that. I mean, it, you know, fourteen's interesting, it says there shall be compliance at all times with the order of conditions, so.
You should buy the construction committee.
Yeah, so at what time, at what point in time is someone checking that, you're, I mean, so.
So eleven is happening right now, and that's tied to IC, but it's happening only for Phase Three.
Right.
There's the question mark about Phases One and Two, I don't think it says that these have to happen sequentially. Obviously, the road has to be in from Ward Street to Phase Three, but that doesn't mean that the houses in Phases One and Two, which happened to be earlier, had to be built out first. Nor does I, do I think it says anywhere in Section IC that you have to do Phase One before you get to Phase Three. They're not, I mean, we have to be logical about it, of course, they have to have the infrastructure to support it, even if that infrastructure is outside of the phase.
So, but the answer, I think, procedurally, we're, the building commissioner's taken a position by issuing the report saying this is what he needed for Phase Three, and he's fine with it. If you, if you disagree, you can challenge that, and then it's before us, it's not before us now.
I fully understand, okay. I'm happy to hear that what Emily just said is that it's not sequential, so that Phases One and Two are not done. So what the fear was.
Except for, except for a hundred percent of the COs.
And all of a sudden, ordinary level, Phase One and Two behind us, because already I'm Phase Two. I think Emily just said that's not case.
Potentially, maybe not.
Yeah, not nece.
I, I mean, a hundred percent of the COs. We've, we've got to make sense of it all, and we're trying to do that, we're working with legal counsel, because we need help making sense of it all.
And I think some of the issues that I've been reviewing in light of the fact that there is now a pending appeal for enforcement.
Right.
Really should wait until that discussion happens.
Right.
So I've now done the work, I'm in the recent review, but I will now be prepared for whenever that comes to be.
That hearing is scheduled, and then we'll have to schedule it.
Whenever that is scheduled.
Okay.
Okay, so your report has been received, thank you.
Thank you.
Right, but I mean, I think now the building commissioner makes a determination whether or not, I mean, he's reported this, he's reported to you as satisfactory.
Yes.
So he can then act on, yeah, yeah, COs as he deems appropriate.
Yeah, and if someone thinks that's not appropriate, they, they can certainly challenge it before the board.
Right.
Right.
But we don't have any hearing noticed about that right now.
Right. Okay.
Been on that one.
Okay, any, any further, Emily?
No, I, you know, we talked about this already, but these are, this is the site plan review for the cell power from the planning board, so we talked about it, I just want to make sure now that it's been signed, we're going to refer that one condition, well, two conditions related to.
Okay. Thanks.
We're going to, yeah, we're going to refer the, the ones about the six-month year.
Yes, and the bond.
Right.
Okay.
Yes.
So refer those back to the planning.
Yes, and that hearing is on for July twenty-third, Ron Grape is available. Um, I'm so sorry, but I did, so you're going to do SUV on June thirtieth, and we had to do a joint hearing with the planning board for the town, the rec department, paddle board, operation at the harbor at seven that evening. So if anybody cannot make it at seven that evening, I mean, I'll, and we'll get an option. But otherwise, you're here at seven thirty anyways.
Okay. We're adjourned. Thank you for staying so late, Mr. Television Man.